Today's council meeting, it's Tuesday, June 18th. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask Clementine to do roll call and share with the public on how they can participate in public comment.
Certainly, Councilmember Barber.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Hafa.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Present.
And Mayor Williamson.
Here.
And information on participating in today's meeting and providing public comment, including remotely by Zoom or telephone, is available on this meeting's agenda, which is online at icearchmonterey.org. Remote commenters, you will be muted until it is your turn to speak and a timer will be shown on the screen. If you're connected on Zoom, the timer is accurate with no delay. In the chamber, we recommend wearing masks and ask attendees to keep your phones and devices muted to prevent audio interference with the meeting. And thank you for participating in your city government.
All righty, and with that, I will ask Dr. Barber to lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I'm not going to partake.
Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice strong. Unless you're Stephen King.
I'm going to ask you to just not do any interruptions, please, or I'll have you removed from the chamber. All righty. With that, we will go ahead and start with presentation. First, on the agenda is to recognize city employees for milestone anniversaries and retirements. What a great way to start this council meeting to celebrate. So I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have only one employee this quarter that we recognize for milestone anniversary, and he happens to work in our police department. And our police chief will say a few words about this employee.
Thank you, Hans, Mayor, City Council. It is truly my honor to recognize Sergeant. Wait.
At the fire department trying to upstairs.
Oh, yeah. Actually, I think it was an ambulance. I can't blame that on the fire department. To recognize Sergeant Jason Newby on his 20 years of service. So I have something that I'm just going to read to you. He's not here with us today, but I'd like to honor all of the service that he has done. Monterey Police Department Sergeant Jason Newby, number 234, has been an integral part of the City of Monterey Police Department for the past 20 years, from November 2003 to present. Sergeant Newby started with Monterey, City of Monterey, as a police officer trainee in November of 2003. He graduated from the Basic Police Academy and became a police officer in June of 2004. During his tenure, Sergeant Newby has worked as a patrol officer, a K-9 officer, a detective assigned to investigations, a Monterey Peninsula Regional Special Response Unit Operator, a field training officer, a firearms range instructor, and as a sergeant. Sergeant Newby is currently assigned as a patrol supervisor on the A Platoon Swing Shift. Sergeant Newby is a veteran, having served in the United States Army for seven years as a linguist. Sergeant Newby holds a bachelor's degree in psychology with an emphasis in law and society from Purdue University. Sergeant Newby leads by example in exhibiting professionalism, service, integrity, hard work, and commitment to the law enforcement profession. The City of Monterey Police Department thanks Sergeant Newby for his dedication to our community for the past 20 years. Thank you.
All righty, anybody on the council have any questions, comments?
No question, but just convey to Jason, congratulations on 20 years. I'm sure he's not here because he's working or away at travel, but I remember in 2004 when he started, and I had the privilege of just a couple of years to work with, work with him. So it's very, very satisfactory to see the progression that the chief read in terms of his assignments, his duties, his responsibilities, and his continued support in a variety of ways to the community. So hats off, congratulations to Jason. And I remember when he was a newbie, and he used to take some jokes about that, but now he's a veteran. So congratulations to veteran Jason Newby.
Well said, Councilmember Smith. Anything else? All right, we will open it up for public comment. So the way that this works, and this is on the presentation, so only on the presentation, this is not general public comment. So if anybody has any comment related to the recognition of our employees as, as the presentation was just given, this is the time for public comments on this. Anybody in the chamber? And let me just clarify, because I see new faces in the room. There also might be some new faces online. How the public comment period works is that we open it up at the beginning of the public comment period for folks to share their public comment. Once everybody's been identified at the beginning, we'll close it off. And then only those people that were identified at the beginning will be able to provide public comment. So everybody has an opportunity to do so, but you have to identify yourself at the beginning. So you want to speak on this presentation? Okay, so we have one in the chamber. Anybody else in the chamber? All right, so we have one in the chamber. We'll check online. I'll do a countdown for folks to use the raise hand function on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have one online. We'll go ahead and start in the chamber.
My name is Steve Lightfoot, and I disapprove of the way the chief over here grabbed my sign.
Mr. Lightfoot, that's not the.
It has to do with Sergeant Newby.
Okay, well, please stay focused on that, please.
Okay, in 2001, while I was being harassed with false charges in Santa Cruz, Sergeant Newby was part of a conspiracy to put five or six police officers on me for trying to park my van. They tried to make it a DUI until they blew a triple zero. So then they made it a possession of an open container in my car. I had a teaspoon of brandy in a bottle I thought was empty that I mistook for olive oil. The details are on my website, lenonmurdertruth.com. You can go to the Footnotes and New Developments page. And people, the city council here is run by a homosexual mayor and a homosexual Italian mafia.
Okay, you're done. You're done. I've told you to stay on topic, and you're getting off topic. So you're done with the public comment.
Mayor, I agree.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll go to the speaker online, please.
This is a telephone caller. Please go ahead. You'll need to dial star six two.
I'm not quite. I'm not quite clear if this is public comment or if this is a comment on the previous matter.
So this was, this is public comment for the recognition of city employees for milestone anniversaries and retirements.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. I'll wait for a public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and now we'll open it up for general public comments. So this is for items that are not related to items that are on this afternoon's agenda?
Sorry, real quick. Before we go to public comments, Mr. Mayor, I just want to reiterate Sergeant Jason Newby deserves our recognition. He deserves our praise and doesn't need to be deteriorated by, by some member of the public here who, who we all well know and the validity of his statement. So Sergeant Jason Newby deserves our respect for 20 years serving the public. And I want to express as city manager my personal appreciation for Sergeant Newby as well, and hope that this memory will prevail in his mind and not the previous speaker.
Well, thank you, Hans. I couldn't agree with you more. I think that the credibility of the public comments speak for themselves, and this is coming from a place of transparency, of allowing public comment, feedback, and input. We are more than receptive to that, but we're not going to accept these, these facts that are spewing hate and bigotry in the council chambers. So with that, we'll go ahead and offer folks an opportunity to speak to items that are not on this, on today's agenda. So I'm going to go ahead and do a check in the chamber. Anybody in the council chamber that wants to speak, I ask yourself to identify by either standing up to the left of the dais. So everybody that's standing, you're good. You don't have to raise your hand. But if you choose to, you can remain seated for now. And if you could just identify yourself by raising your hand. So I don't see any hands up. So it's current, it's just currently the folks that are standing. And then we'll go ahead and check online. Give folks a countdown to use the raise hand function on Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. We have two online. I'm going to stick with two minutes because we've allocated 15 minutes for general public comment. Is the council good with that? So I'm going to go to two minutes. Okay, so go ahead and start in the chamber.
Steve Lightfoot, again, of lenonmurdertruth.com. Like to talk about Leon Panetta. He is part of the Italian mafia that runs this area. I used to work for Pebble Beach. I used to work for the Sardine Factory. I got fired for being queer, for not being queer. And there's a lot of weirdness going on lately. The chief of police just snagged my sign that says queer mayor obstructing free speech, which will be all over my van, people. And the other side says Leon Panetta sucking Stephen King's dick.
Okay, all right. Do you have anything that's of value to the city of Monterey's business?
Yes. I am an important figure in politics, and I'd like to read you about my evidence concerning John Lennon's murder. A comparison of two photos, one of Stephen King three months before John Lennon was assassinated, and another of the photo of the man getting Lennon's last autograph before shooting him, sums up my evidence. Stephen King is the same man getting the autograph, and Chapman is a lookalike impostor who was used by our government to completely fool you and get away with killing John Lennon. Chapman didn't kill anybody. And is probably not even in prison at all, knowing what I know about the situation. In fact, nobody ever saw trial for Chapman or noticed that travesty of justice. That was my first clue to look into the matter. It's all part of government bold print codes and Time Newsweek and US News and Roll Report Magazine surrounding the night of the crime, where I discovered Mark David King Chapman and Chapman's attached letter to the editor where he explains how Reagan is moving him a pawn armed into a hostile square weeks before the murder. I have stood inches away from Stephen King in Maine, and all he could say to me was to take care, I will want you to take care, before he sauntered off. His bookseller friend admitted to me one night, he's afraid he's going to fry. So he has confessed, one of his closest friends, he killed John Lennon. And look for my van, people, it's going to be on the sign he stole.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I wanted to give you a report from what has happened at the county regarding an important topic, Tarpe flats. Like to thank city manager for finally putting a letter in from the City of Monterey with its position on the proposed development on the county housing element, which proposed 1,430 units of housing on sites one, two, three, and four. This would have been twice the size of Delray Oaks. Monterey's on three sides of it. Montero's on the fourth side. Fortunately, the people in Montero hired an attorney, and there was a massive appearance at the County Planning Commission on the 5th of June. I was there all day for the County Planning Commission. They put the proposed developments at Tarpe flats in the maybe category. The supervisors came back last week and deleted those four sites from the county development, the housing element. It was to be now submitted, that draft housing element, to the state for approval. The danger is, and this was not in the Herald article, that a builder's remedy allows somebody to put in a request for development on Tarpe flats for some other development of some size. So we're not out of the woods yet until the county gets its housing element approved. So I just wanted to give you an update. I was there for, and the planning commission, all day session and the half day session, the supervisors, and there were at least a dozen speakers that opposed developments on Tarpe flats for various reasons. So thank you again for the letter.
Mr. Really?
Good afternoon. My name is Gina Sessions. I live in the Monte Vista neighborhood, and I'm speaking today in response to the June 3rd agenda report regarding NCIP and CIP funding. I planned this, I have it all written out for three minutes, so I'm going to skip a little bit. I hope it's coherent. First, I am a resident concerned about neighborhood safety, and our neighborhood, San Bernaby Drive, which is a main thoroughfare, believe it or not, between Pacific Avenue and downtown Monterey, going by schools and via Pariso Park. We, it has a very unsafe, narrowly marked one passage, one lane passage around a blind S curve, and with limited visibility on coming traffic. We sponsored a now unfinished NCIP project in 2018, which was approved, but soon thereafter, the city approvals clawed back the funding during COVID. Now the project is left with plans. Okay, so I better hit to what I really want to say, and that is, I'm responding to the proposal to insert new high-cost safety projects as a priority over and above prior safety-related neighborhood projects, specifically the $500 million to $1 billion undergrounding project. To be clear, I do not challenge the need for fire stations or to look at undergrounding electrical. However, the undergrounding project is costly in magnitudes of dollars, and the project is in the infancy. It stands alone as a governmental plan to commit $500 million to $1 billion without what I would consider adequate planning. For instance, well-articulated plans, goals, objective engineering components, milestones, related costs, mostly importantly tangible outreach to property owners to educate about personal costs in this and to take a vote. So I think that you only have eight seconds. So my point is basically, it's a good idea, but it's ill-advised at this time, given the importance of other projects and the lack of completion of that plan, to begin to put aside $2 million a year to support it. Thank you.
And if you would be so willing, you could send your comments to the council, and we'll be sure to take a look at the full, the full reading of that. So you can connect with Nat here, and he can give you the contact information.
Council, Mayor Council, my name is Nelson Bigg, and I just want to bring something up to you guys that's happening to all property owners and apartment owners. This is a portfolio of a 400 unit that's part of the group that I own and manage with a group of investors. Our insurance went for the year annually, because I have this big policy, from $169,000 a year to $581,000. That was a $400,000 increase in that small portfolio of properties. That is, that is what we're trying to get to you, that you cannot have rent control that limits it to 2% or 3% over CPI. That, that, that increase, by the way, and it's lucky if I can even get the insurance because State Farm is leaving, Farmers is leaving, Travelers has left. We have issues that you don't see day to day, and we have to get these costs back from the people that rent from them. But it's part of what we pay to make sure that when the apartment floods, burns, whatever, that we can rebuild it quickly and put them back into it. So what I'm asking you to do is to be cognizant of the incredible amount of expense that landlords are going through in the last four or five years. COVID, price of lumber, steel, cement, labor, it is far exceeds what you guys are planning to put on us as landlords. And I'm coming here early because I'm hoping that you will look at this, because it will have a direct effect to all the tenants who are there or the future tenants, because when they leave and that next tenant comes in, his rent's going to be way up here if we keep these down here. It has to be equitable for everybody that lives in our apartments. It's only fair that everybody gets equal treatment, and that's how I run my properties. One, very, very few people get a discount for anything else unless they've done something incredible for the, for, for the city or some other public sector. What do you call it?
Service.
Service or charity. That's what I was trying to get. Thank you for your time, but please keep that in mind, because we will be coming back. I know it's not on the agenda, but it will be coming up.
Thank you. And if you'd be willing, you can email that report to the council or give it to staff, and they can send it to us.
I'll have it written in a letter form, and I'll send a letter to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor Williamson and council members. My name is Martha Craftcheck, and I'm here today to express concerns about a $340 million bond measure proposed by the Monterey Peninsula Unified School District for the November election. In 2010, voters approved MPUSD's $110 million Measure P. In 2018, MPUSD hired CAW architects to produce a facilities needs assessment for all schools within, within the district. MPUSD used this assessment to implore voters to fix the crumbling infrastructure of our schools. So again, in 2018, voters approved a $213 million Measure I bond. As a homeowner, I would have anticipated that MPUSD would triage each school site and determine the most pressing needs, but that did not happen. Instead, without transparency, MPUSD used our taxpayer bond dollars for many construction projects that were not even considered on the needs assessment. For example, Monterey High School had over $95 million in needs. Yet, according to MPUSD's own document, the only money that was spent was for parking, paint, and gutters. Now MPUSD is poised to approve a $340 million bond. Local property owners are still paying for both Measure P and Measure I. The payback for Measure I alone is $436 million, and the payback for this new proposed bond will be an additional $855 million, raising the indebtedness of property owners to $1.3 billion. MPUSD has stated, once again, they need the money to fix the schools, while MPUSD had over $300 million in taxpayer funding and did not prioritize their spending based on the urgent needs of the schools as they promised. Some of the facilities needs that were mentioned back in 2010 and 2018 are now mentioned again. I encourage you all to take a look at your own property tax statement and what you currently are paying. This amount would essentially double if the bond was passed, and all of us would be paying hundreds of dollars more every year for at least the next 30 years to pay off this $1.3 billion debt. Thank you for your time.
Hi, Jean Rash, Monterey Vista. I want to assure you that the undergrounding proposal that passed NCIP is for undergrounding. There will be an employee that guides us, an engineer that guides us, but the point is to be putting in undergrounding. I want to mention that on May 9th, David Smalls wrote an article in the Monterey County Now about the city elections this fall. In that article, he stated that the mayor and council member Garcia and a contender for District 3 this fall have formed a slate. The paper said they coalesced into a slate, coalesced slate. I can't tell you how sad and disappointed I was with this concept and how out of touch I feel it is and not representative of what residents of Monterey want or what they need. I'm sure people are saying, well, of course Jean Rash feels. I'm sure people are saying, well, of course Jean Rash feels that way. She's running for District 3 also. But let me tell you what I've heard. People don't want to hear how they should be voting. They don't want to be represented by a block. Women are outraged that a block of three men is proposing to have some kind of ideology. The Brown Act is in place in order to make sure there's transparency on issues. Now, I know there's no issue on the table, but it sure doesn't look good that three people have agreed on what they're going to support. I mean, why else have a slate? It looks like backdoor politicking. It stinks and it's the old boys' network. And I hope you rescind it, quite frankly. I don't think it's good for you. I don't think it's good for the city. The only one that's good for is me, quite frankly. What would I like? I would like openness, independence, creative minds, digging minds that go down deep and come up with better ideas for the city. Ever since 2016, we've all been divided. This is one more thing dividing us. Some people are in, some people are out. You're on a slate. You're on a slate. We don't need that. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Keith Ruzard. I'm with the Giant Giant Kelp Restoration Project in Monterey. I first learned to scuba dive in Monterey in 1985 and when I first fell in love with kelp forests. In 2009, I learned to identify and count fish and taught scientific protocols for Reef Check California. In October of 2013, we watched sadly as 22 species of sea stars were decimated by a wasting disease that turned them to goo. The ocean was overheated by the blob, a warm water event that lasted through 2016. Kelp needs cold nutrient-rich water and sunlight to grow and without that, urchins emerged from cracks and ate the kelp. Now urchin barons dominate around the Monterey Peninsula and have grown and spread down the Big Circle to Morro Bay. In 2021, we received a sport fishing rule amendment from the California Department of Fish and Game Commission to call an unlimited number of sea urchins at Tanker's Reef just east of the commercial wharf. Volunteer scuba divers learned at local dive shops how to safely call 3/4 of a million urchins, over 1,527 dives, and grew an 11 acre kelp forest in a former urchin baron. We are petitioning the Fish and Game Commission again to allow volunteer divers to restore kelp forests in the best places around the Monterey Peninsula, which includes the submerged lands within Monterey City limits. Rob O'Keefe, president and CEO of Monterey County Convention and Visitors Bureau, said, Monterey County is breathtakingly beautiful and inspiring, but we recognize travelers have many choices. Monterey County tourism is worth over $3 billion. What is breathtakingly beautiful worth? Will people still come when the reefs are stripped of biodiversity? When there are not fish for the fishers? When the endangered brown pelicans, sea lions, and sea otters starve to death out here? Will Morro Bay with all the sea otters in the estuary become the bigger tourist destination? Let's work together and begin kelp restoration ecotourism where Monterey visitors help restore the marine ecosystem and increase commerce in this city. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. Eric Palmer from Monterey Vista. I just wanted to commend the city and the Measure P and S Oversight Committee and the community for successful implementation of Measure P and S improvements, especially since 2015. And this is on my mind because I've seen the beautiful repaving of Fremont Lighthouse and I appreciate how the neighborhoods are prioritized first and now we're seeing a lot of investments in our major thoroughfares. Fremont is a major entrance into our city for visitors and then there's lighthouse repairs that were not only a safety improvement, but I'd argue it's a beautification project and has added to the revitalization of that business district along with a lot of private investments that have been happening lately with mixed-use commercial properties in recent years. It makes me proud to drive through the city and see these improvements, including the ADA projects, and I'm proud that we voted as a community to pass these measures. The only recommendation that I had would be to add Measure S signage during construction to let people know that taxpayer dollars, that's our taxpayer dollar money at work. And then maybe that could help get support to renew these measures since we still have work to do and maybe we can amend the measure in the future to include public facilities. Thank you.
Hello, remember me? Karen Brown, New Monterey. I was here six weeks or so ago to talk about the 600 block of Dutra Street and past the city council's move to move them out, the Native American people who are like a village there. I assume in the time between then, you may have read in the media, there've been three articles related to that. That's very satisfying. Haven't heard anything, however, from the city. I'm not forgetting about it and I hope that you aren't either. One of the main things I wanted to do today, it looks like I better do it first before my two minutes are up, is to say that while we are, must create some sort of rectification for past mistakes, we must also do it better now. I want to make it clear that I'm not opposed to the current low income housing plan near the 500 block of Dutra Street. And I want to make it clear that some of the measures that I've suggested that the city might do to make up for the past include things that would be helpful in the present. For example, making sure that we have researchers and cultural monitors, that we hire them and that they look for recent native connections and artifacts and not just ancient and non-Indigenous history. Oh, and possible naming of buildings or rooms to recognize and connect us to the history of Dutra Street. And I really do look forward to talking with you further about what has happened and what we can do. And I thank you for the beautiful diversity of this city council.
Thank you. And with that, we will take it online.
Yes, first I'll call on this telephone caller with the last three digits, 837.
Brian Rosen here and I want to reveal some information about the SURF project. There's a May 17th letter that I believe Ed Smith has received from the Coastal Commission. SURF is not coastal compliant and it isn't likely to be coastal compliant because it doesn't develop a project centered around environmentally sensitive habitat area. Coastal Commission, but hundreds of thousands of dollars are being wasted. Furthermore, the Coastal Commission makes it clear that there's no way that SURF will preclude rail because it's going to preclude bringing back rail. It's going to limit future, any future development. So there's not going to be room for rail unless you take out the SURF and put it right in the middle of the roadway. Ed Smith is going along, Tamsi is rubber stamping whatever MST and Tamsi want, who own land, who want to develop it near the proposed Fifth Street Station. The city of Monterey's policy has, as far as I know, it still is to bring back rail to the area and we need to stop this SURF and we need Ed Smith to do his part to stop a project that's, stop wasting money on a project that's hundreds of thousands of dollars on a project that, and that is going to keep rail from coming back, which is much more environmental. Is this what, they've been lying and literally lying about the tracks staying in place that both uses can coexist. Now we know the truth and Coastal Commission is laying it right down on the line. So please, Mr. Smith, do your job and don't just rubber. Rubber stamping, Tamsi and MST wasting tax dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. MST is very stubborn, they say.
All right, thank you. Your time is up and our next speaker is another telephone caller with the last three digits, 705. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. I'm objecting to the mayor's mandate to limit public comment to two minutes if it doesn't fit into more than 15 minutes for public comment. You know, you're the first mayor or a city council to limit within a 15 minute time limit. And you say you want to hear from the public, you have done just the opposite. You get paid for being a mayor and sitting up there. We, the public, come here unpaid, but we sacrificed our time to express our concerns and your scorn for our concerns is offensive and must stop. And you, mayor, violate our ability to express ourselves in a timely and respectful manner. Give us back our three paltry minutes. No matter how long you must wade into the night to receive our comments because at least you are being paid. You keep telling us the public how much you appreciate public comments while curtailing our time any way you can. And on another concern, please sue the governor for forcing our area to comply with the affordable housing mandate because of our water shortage and the value of our marine sanctuary being one of the most important sanctuaries in the world. It cannot continue to withstand the building and the CO2 buildup that this city is going along with. So please, value what we have before it's all gone. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll close general public comment.
Mayor, may I make a quick comment? I'm not going to address some of the callers on Tamsi and MST business, but stay tuned. We'll have council comments at the end of the evening, so I'll make some remarks there.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Smith. All right. And with that, we'll go to consent. Does anybody wish to pull anything on the consent in the council? Okay, we'll go out to the public for public comment on anything that's on consent, including if you wish to pull something for the council to deliberate further. I'll check in with the chamber. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on anything on the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll check online. I'll do a countdown for folks to use the raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. And we have nobody online. With that, I'll bring it back to the council for motion deliberation.
Make a motion to approve all consent agenda items.
Second.
Let's move into second and any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I didn't do that on purpose, I promise you. All right. With that, we'll go to our public hearing item, number nine, amend permanent local housing allocation, also known as PLHA grant activities, plan to reallocate FY 2020 to 2024 funding to homeless assistance activities. And with that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy to see Anastasia Wyatt here and Anastasia will present this item.
Good afternoon, mayor, city council. I'm here to present the amendment to the permanent local housing allocation program. This is a program that comes in five-year segments, sort of like CDBG. But this is a state grant and it is a permanent local housing fund and it's funded through $75 recording fee on real estate documents. So you'll see that I have some information about the money that we have so far knowledge of from the state, but we don't have full knowledge of all of the five years. So I put as much as I could into the staff report about how much we've received so far in this allocation, but just so you know, that's kind of how the grant works. So it's a very important source of funding. It's a little more flexible than some of our other funding sources like CDBG and it is designed to help with affordable housing. So with that explanation, we'll move forward. So the city would like to amend the grant allocation. This is the first round of five years. So I think when we first started, we thought, oh, this will be great. Let's do, let's utilize the funding for affordable housing predevelopment costs. And now we're realizing we can help fund shelters with this and we do have a few shelters throughout our community and that is something that we're proposing, that we now amend the funds to be utilized for shelter.
Thank you.
So the original allocation was 30% towards, toward a rental assistance program, but this rental assistance program is actually much different than what we have. It requires that we help people for six months and they have to be 30% area median income. So very limited and with the allocation that we receive, we wouldn't even be able to help one person for six months. So what we're recommending and then the predevelopment fees, we were able to do that for the first year. So now what we're recommending is that we change the allocation to put 95%. I'm sorry, it's not moving forward. Let's see. Can you, sorry, Nat. Thank you. So now we're just saying, let's move all of the funding into homeless shelter services, funding and the rest, there's a 5% administrative fee that the city can gain for the administration of this program. So this is the main situation with this and request on how we would like to amend this grant and to the five-year plan. So that is all I have.
To the council, any questions? Please, Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, just highlighting some of the, I'm trying to locate, what do we anticipate annual revenue to be?
Councilmember Smith, that's a little difficult and we're going to see what's happening right now with the market since this is based off of a recording fee, a $75 recording fee per property. We really don't know. For the prior years, 2019 to 2020, we received 116,419. From FY 20 to 21, that went up to 180,952 and in FY 21 to 22, we received 199,000. So very different for the different years. So we'll see what comes next.
Yeah, and obviously it depends on the real estate activity and market, how many closures there are through escrow. The $75, is it a transactional fee, a close of escrow document fee fixed at 75 bucks?
Yes, it's a transactional fee. Right, and that's done at the state level, not at any local level.
Okay, so a local escrow company would go through the process, collect, and they transfer it to the state?
That's a good question that I don't want to say I know for sure, but I imagine that is what is in the legislation. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Barber.
Yes, just a quick question. So this is the last year of the grant, correct?
We are getting into the, it's really a funny grant because it says it started in 2019, 20, but the whole fiscal year has to go through in order for the state to collect the fee and then they figure out how much every jurisdiction gets and then there's a competitive amount. So it kind of takes time for us to get through this grant. So we just expended and requested the FY 19, 20 funds and we're really not that far behind. So we have two fiscal years that we're waiting on from the state. So we've been told what the award is for three fiscal years, but we're waiting on the last two fiscal years of this five-year segment. Then we're going to come along and it's not like CDBG where it's really nice and clear and cut and dry. So I know that's an odd thing about this grant.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Anybody on this side? Okay, perfect. I know that, just one quick question. It makes sense what we're doing for this allocation if and when it comes back around again. I'm wondering what the possibility looks like for us to segment out, at least put in our plan, the opportunity for us to allocate funding towards the local housing trust fund? What is that, what do the opportunities look like there in the future?
Mayor, that's a really good question. And so this is a funny grant, as I say. The state has not made it possible for smaller jurisdictions yet to really apply for that trust fund. And so like a regional housing trust fund, we're not large enough as the city of Monterey to be able to apply for our own trust fund. So it leaves us out at this point and at the state level or at the county level, if we were able to do it. And the reason we weren't able to do it before is because the city of Salinas needed to join us to give us the numbers to be able to apply for the grant funding. But without Salinas, they went ahead and did their own trust fund and that leaves the rest of us without the numbers and population to be able to even apply.
So I talked to council members in Salinas and they seem open to the idea of that. So assuming... So assuming that that does happen and the benefit just for, for folks' awareness is it just brings additional funding overall to the county. So if we were able to pull it together amongst multiple jurisdictions so that it could work, I think that there could be value in that. So you're saying that individually, we can't do it, which check that makes sense. But if we were able to pull together to somehow include Salinas, that we would be able to include that in our next plan.
Mayor, I don't think Salinas has already applied and I believe been awarded for the trust fund. And once you get it going, I think it'd be very difficult for them to pull it back and join a regional fund.
One, one final follow-up question. If there is a way to make it work, I'm just wondering, is it possible for us to include it on our local, our permanent local housing allocation plan? So that way, if the opportunity opens up, we can use, utilize those fundings for that purpose?
Mayor, you could always, if there was an opportunity, amend a plan. And so this program is making it more flexible. It's been a little difficult to amend a plan at this point. So we're lucky, we're getting into the last minute here to be able to amend this plan. But in the future, it should be easier. So if the opportunity does lend itself and people are in agreement, we have all of the other alignment with the state and other jurisdictions, we could amend the plan and add that.
Perfect. Thank you so much for that. With that, we'll go out to public comment. So we'll just check in the chamber first. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? Not seeing anybody. So we'll go ahead and check online. Go ahead and do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. And we have nobody online, so we'll bring it back to the council for a motion deliberation. Oh, yes, please, Councilmember.
Yeah, I just wanted to say appreciate staff bringing this forward. When you look at the range of social services that are offered in the county, some of them are funded kind of directly by, by the county via the, via state funding. And, but some are not. And homeless wraparound services are of the latter. They're not well-funded in terms of kind of ongoing funding streams from the county. So for those providers to be able to have this additional assistance from the city, I think will make a big difference. People shared, are often willing to give charitable donations to kind of create shelters, to build buildings. But it's the ongoing cost of providing for those wraparound services that create an ongoing fiscal challenge for those agencies. So this is, I think, a really good thing. Thank you. And I'll make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Is there a second? All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I unfortunately skipped an item on the agenda, so I apologize for that. Let me go back to that. We're going to go ahead and adjourn to the Ocean View Community Services District meeting. We have one item on the agenda to receive Ocean View Community Service District Quarterly Report. And with that, I'll pass it to Chrissy for staff presentation.
Yes, there is no update to the report that's in the agenda packet.
Perfect. And we don't need a motion? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Open the public, yeah.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you. Thank you for that. Opening up for, for public comment, anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? We have one. Anybody else? It's just.
It's me again.
Give me one second, Bob. Let me just check online real quick.
How many years are we going to do this?
Do we have anybody online that wishes to speak on this item? Please use the raise hand function on Zoom. I'll do a countdown to five, four, three, two, one. We have nobody online. So you are the speaker.
Bob Ballis, Monterey, and longtime sufferer of owning the property there in Canary Row. Good thing about this quarterly update, I can tell you guys what's going on. Some of you know, we had our court hearing on June 4th of the writ of mandamus because the Coastal Commission improperly, without any authority, took back our permit. Unfortunately, Judge Wills decided not to view on that point. He gave the Coastal Commission full discretion to decide who's an owner, who's not. Irrelevant of who has proof of ownership, which was strange. So we pointed out, it does create a real issue where anyone could kill a project now in California by just raising your hand, saying I'm an owner without proof. So we haven't had the final ruling, but the expectation, he sort of indicated the ruling, will be to send it back to Coastal Commission for them to have another hearing as to whether or not there is a change of circumstances. That change of circumstances shouldn't come into effect because we should have been put in place with the permit and it would have been grandfathered in. But what that will do is delay this until probably September is when they'll have their Central Coast, their meeting up here for this. And at that heating, the hearing, again, I'm sure they'll deny the extension for change of circumstances, saying that the ocean is going to rise 23 feet in the next hundred years. We'll have a gondola between the city hall and our property. It'd be great. But after that, we'll, we're probably going to have to appeal this and we're looking another year. As a result, I did finally, I just painted the parking lot, cleaned it up. I'm trying to keep the place clean, being we're not going to tear it out immediately. But hopefully, within a year or two, we can break around and get moving forward if we can get the judges to jump on our side. But we feel very solid, we can win at least in appellate court if we need to go there. That's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Bob. All right. With that, we'll bring it back to the council. Any last comments? All righty. With that, we will go ahead and now adjourn back to the city council meeting and we'll move on to our public appearance items. First one is item number 10. Approved Memorandum of Understanding Between the City and the Monterey Executive Management Employees Association, also known as MAMIA, for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. With that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff introduction.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we are in the middle or at the end of that, actually, of labor negotiations with our various groups. And we are bringing forward to you the first suggestion to sign a memorandum of understanding approved between the city and our Monterey Executive Management Employees. And our Human Resources Director will present.
Thank you, Hans. Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. Hans kind of summed it up. As you know, our current agreement with MAMIA, our management, executive management team has, will expire at the end of this fiscal year. So we've been conferred in good faith and we bring forward a MOU for your approval today. Some of the terms of this new agreement are for a three-year term. 4% wage increases in each year of the agreement. There are market adjustments for the individual executive teams to be within 5% of the median. And we are requesting that the tuition reimbursement increase and health insurance remains status quo to what it has been in the previous years.
All right. Thank you for the presentation and for all the work in the negotiations.
Any questions?
Any questions on the council? Please.
Yeah, I think for the benefit of the public, it might be helpful if you could explain a little bit more about the 5% of the median, what that means, how we arrived at that and, and why that is part of the agreement.
Okay. Gosh, probably a year or so ago, there was a, a, we reached out to a consultant to do a citywide comp study, so wage and comp study. That finally came back. We shared the results with the individual labor groups. And so when I say five, within 5% of the median, it was an administrative decision to try to bring our employees to market. And so for us, market is plus or minus 5% within the median. And so for this particular group, there are, each of the executives were a little bit behind market. And so we're asking to bring them within 5% of market, not all the way to market, but to the, within 5% of that. So does that help explain? Okay.
Could I ask a follow-up question? You said, you said comp. And maybe some folks don't understand that. Could you describe comps? And what does that look like? How do we go about selecting what those are?
Okay, so comps, I mean comparable agencies. We have 16 of them that were approved by city council in 2019. I do not have all of them memorized, but there are 16 different agencies that we look at to compare our wages, our benefits, any stipends and just various things. It's who we've agreed that we will look at consistently.
Perfect. Thank you. Any other questions on the council?
None here.
All right. And with that, thank you, Brett. We'll open it up to public comment. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? We have one speaker in the chamber. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. All right. So we have one in the chamber and let's check online. We'll do five seconds for folks to raise the hand via Zoom to five, four, three, two, one. And we have nobody on Zoom.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Rick Hoyer. Actually, I have a question. It would be helpful for the public to know, what's the cost of this contract? You know, what is the increased cost the city will have to bear and find money for? That would be helpful to know. It's great to know it's going to be within medium and all the things, but that means nothing to the general public.
And with that, we'll bring it back to the council. I, I'll pass it to you, please.
I do have, I do have some costing here. For fiscal year, fiscal year 24, 25, the increased cost will be $56,800. For fiscal year 25, 26, the estimated cost is approximately $70,000. And for fiscal year 26, 27, increased cost of approximately $70,000.
And, and for the record, it's, it is available, the numbers are available in the agenda report. As you can imagine, that's cost that the city will incur year on out. So we'll see an increase in the city's budget to that effect. And this is one of seven MOUs that hopefully we will be approving within the next few council meetings here. And so just take that into context that these are only a few of the city employees and we still have more, more to go. Okay. And with that, bring it to the council for discussion, please, Councilmember Smith.
You ready for discussion or you ready for?
Either way, motion will, will entertain it.
Okay, so I just wanted to highlight, thank you, Mr. Hoyer, for the question. Thank you for the answer for the public in the staff report. It does include the Campaign Disclosure Requirement, the Levin Act, which requires the full disclosure of those amounts that were reported by our Human Resources Director. So thank you for that. So we do have compliance with the state law. And there's no other discussion. I'm ready for a motion to approve staff recommendation to act on agenda item number 10.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify one thing, just so it, there's no confusion. So the Campaign Disclosure Requirement, the Levin Act, it doesn't apply to this agenda report. It's, it's the part right before, so I, I know it's probably a little confusing, but there is always a section in our agenda report that talks about fiscal implications. And that funding outline that Brett read out is from the agenda report. So that's always available.
It's not the Levin Act. I'm, I'm an error. That's correct. But it is, it is spelled out.
No, but I appreciate you pointing that out for the public. All righty. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And with that, we'll go on to item number 11. Adopting Resolution Establishing Compensation and Benefits Package for Unrepresented Confidential Executive Management Employees. With that, I'll pass it to Hans for staff.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will conduct this agenda report. The Assistant City Manager, the Finance Director and the Human Resources Director are all unrepresented and confidential employees. What that means is that during the negotiations, even with the executive management team, they are representing the interest of the city of Monterey and not there, are not members of the executive bargaining unit. This agenda report is establishing the same terms of the bargaining agreement that we just approved under item number 10. The fiscal implications for, for this measures are for FY 25, 20, 24, 25 is $23,838. For fiscal year 25, 26, it's $31,559. And for fiscal year 26, 27, it's $32,821. And it's, these are basically, again, the, the same conditions that the Human Resources Director just presented to you, including the wage adjustments to market 5% below median. So that's what I have to report to you.
Thank you, Hans, for the presentation. Council, questions? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? Anybody? All righty. We'll go ahead and close it in the chamber, check online. We'll do a count down to five, four, three, two, one. All right. Seeing nobody online, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Bring it back to the council for motion deliberation.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Right. Moved in seconded. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll go on to item number 12. Receive Mayor's Recommendation and Make Appointments to Boards, Commissions and Committees. And I'll pass this to Hans for staff introduction.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This year, the, the boards and commissions had a variety of vacancies. And our city clerk was conducting widespread outreach, ended up with the, this agenda report that includes the recommendations by the mayor for various boards and commissions. And Clementine, our city clerk, has a brief presentation about that.
Hi, Mayor, you're familiar with this because you've been doing so much work on the interviews. But for everybody else, I wanted to provide a little bit of background about why we're here today. Back in 2019, the council adopted an ordinance that made some changes to the city code provisions for boards, commissions and committees. And the change that impacted us right now is that the previous version of terms were two-year terms that were staggered for almost all of the bodies, except the library board, ending in December and June. And the, with this ordinance, it changed to four-year terms for all bodies, which all ends June 30. And so this term, these terms right now are coming up, the first group of four-year appointments ending June 30, 2024. And so this was an unprecedentedly large recruitment for us to do with 47 seats to be filled, 37 of which were these term expirations, seats ending June 30, terms ending, excuse me, on June 30, and 10 existing vacancies also to fill. And so we did a fair amount of outreach on this. I was thinking of things I haven't thought of before to do this outreach. And so as a list, of course, we invited current members who had their terms expiring and were invited to apply. We used our interest list group to email numerous reminders and informational messages about applying. And that list reaches 314 people currently. And I encourage anyone in the public who would like to serve in the future to join that list at monterey.gov/subscribe. We had a news release. I held outreach events, both in person and virtually. Retail advertisements into newspapers, PSAs on the radio. We put it in our city newsletter and other city emails. We put it on social media. It was posted as required in the agenda case. I made a flyer that was distributed at local businesses and at the library and the sports center and shared the flyer with membership organizations. And so I thought it was interesting to track how those methods of outreach were successful or not. And so interestingly, the email from the city clerk had the highest results. But that's good. That shows that people are signing up for our email newsletters and paying attention to them. And then second was social media. So I think that's somewhere to focus too in the future is even more on social media for these because that's a pretty big reach. And third was a little surprising to me with city staff. But that's also great because I think that probably shows that our city staff is announcing this at the different board and commission meetings and getting the word out to the community. And then you can see there are some tied other methods. But I wanted to be specific to thank council members, board and commission and committee members and neighborhood associations for clearly sharing. You can see that between those categories, there was quite a bit of outreach conducted by those parties as well. And so as a result of the recruitment, we received 62 applications. Mayor Williamson spent many hours conducting interviews of all of the applicants. 15 times 62, someone can do the math for me, 15 minutes. But it was, it was much, many days, many appointments that we made for him. And he developed the recommendations seen in the agenda report. And one quick amendment to the recommendations, one applicant has withdrawn. And so there's a new recommendation for the Old Town alternate to the NCIP committee. So the staff recommendation is to make some appointments today and fill up these seats. And I can take any questions.
So let me start, I'm going to be a little bit unorthodox here and maybe give a little bit of addition to the report out. So it's clear regards to the process from, from my perspective. And then we can open it up to questions from the council. So before I begin this though, I want to give a lot of appreciation to Clementine and the rest of the city staff team that that have put a lot of work in organizing in advance all the material in, in order to advertise it, to solicit the, the applications from the community, getting everything prepared for me. There's this huge spreadsheet with all this information on it. Some that they predetermined for me, which is very helpful, and then some additional follow-up and just being so flexible with me to us getting through today. So I just can't thank you all enough for all the work that's being done behind the scenes. It really is, I think, underappreciated. So thank you for that. Just overall, so folks have an awareness of what my process is when I make my recommendations, what I'm looking for as I'm evaluating applications and I'm, and I'm interviewing individuals. In no particular order, I'm looking at, is there more than one candidate? Which is a huge determiner, determiner, right? If, if I'm making a selection, is there an incumbent? Is there somebody that's been serving in that position? Is there somebody that has served on any board commissioner committee? Do they have any prior service to any board commissioner committee in the city experience? Particularly on that board commissioner committee or otherwise, that might be relevant for the work on that board commissioner committee. Distribution of representation amongst each board commission committee and overall, based on the, the new districts. So this was something that I talked about early on and actually as a council, we discussed this when we were talking about the governance process and decided to keep the process the same that I, one of the things that I was looking at was diversity amongst the different districts, so that it's in alignment with us transitioning to that space. Diversity, and, and I want to emphasize that, and as important as diversity is, that's given all other things being equal. So if they're, if they have the ability to be able to serve and, and they would be a good fit for the, the board commissioner committee seat in as much as anybody else. Diversity is a factor and making sure that we have representation from different types of voices. And then I also consider feedback that's given, feedback and input. So if folks reach out to me and they provide some feedback in regards to a certain individual or it's an organization, I always take that feedback into consideration. So that's, I think, overall. I do want to speak to the NCIP recommendations specifically, because obviously there's been a lot of feedback and concern around those in particular. And, and, and to be abundantly clear, there are three folks that are longtime incumbents of the NCIP that I gave the heads up to prior to the agenda report going out. And, and in sharing with them my recommendation to the council to appoint new voices to those spaces, I also thank them for their service, because it has nothing to do with what the work that they've done for the years. And in fact, it's very much appreciated to allow the city to be where we're at today. So very much appreciate their work and my hope that they still continue to stay in the fray. Again, assuming that the council is willing to support my recommendation here today to work in collaboration with the folks that I've, I've recommended, and I'll speak more to that in a second. But it's important to, to point out that these folks in particular have been serving on the NCIP since the late eighties, since the, since the beginning of when NCIP was established. And one of the pieces of feedback that I received from a majority of them was the fact that there was nobody else that was willing to step up in these spaces. Well, in fact, in this instance, clearly there were other folks and based off of the criteria that I had spoken to earlier, there, I believe that these folks are well capable of going into the role and being successful. And so I think to speak to that point that they made, I think we should all be proud that there are folks that are willing to step up and serve. Because clearly that's been an issue for the last almost 40 years for these particular seats. And, and I would just kind of differentiate something here too, to say that part of the data that I asked staff when I was going through the interview process was to provide me information in regards to how long people have been serving on boards, commissions and committees. And when you remove these three folks out of that conversation, the longest-serving person besides that has been serving since 2001. And to me, I, you know, I, there's an argument to be made that that's still a long time. Where can we create space for new voices and perspectives? There are ton, a ton of people in this community, many of you sitting in this room, that are well capable of serving on any of our boards, commissions and committees. And so we need to make sure that we create the space for those voices to be just as part of the process as everybody else. So just kind of wanted to start off with that being a huge factor in regards to my decision. Additionally, diversity was included in that process. And I, I'm proud that the three folks that I'm recommending, two which are, are women, one that is LGBTQ, one that is also a renter. I'm, I'm, I'm proud to, to have that diversity being in my proposed recommendations to the council today. I also want to clarify, because I think that there's, look, it is election season. And I think people are starting to draw their lines in the sand. And we know this, during election season, things get kicked up, people get a little bit extra emotional. And there, this is factual. There are lies being put out in regards to what is going on here. There was comments put out that today the council was going to be considering changes to the NCIP and changing the funding. That is not true. That is not on our agenda tonight. Anybody in the room can grab it at the, at any of the entrances. If you're online, you can view it online. In addition, there are comments about the proposal that staff gave at our last council meeting around changes to the NCIP being my recommend, my, my proposal. It is not my proposal. In fact, as I said in that last council meeting, the proposal that was given by staff was seen by me and everybody else in the council the same time that it was available to everybody else in the public. So there was no coordination with staff in regards to my recommendation. I worked by myself. In fact, I would, I began the interview process well before the proposal from staff came out. So it had no influence on my decision at all. And finally, and I have some other thoughts, but I'm sure it'll come up through the discussion and I'm happy to discuss this further. The folks that I are, that I'm recommending, I spoke to them beforehand and, and described to them this, the political sensitivity around this. And I've also clearly articulated to them that I have no expectation for them to do my bidding. They're not a puppet to do things on my behalf. I selected them because I see them as well-capable community members that want to give in the community. And I trust in their ability to be able to represent their neighborhood and the city at large. And so I look forward to the, the consideration by the council and, and the public comment. So with that, we'll open it up to the council for questions. Please.
Yeah. So I wondered if you could say a little bit more about, you mentioned there's one person who is being recommended, who's been serving since 2001. I'm just wondering if, and I understand also there may have been some of the positions for which there was only one applicant. But is there a standard that you applied in terms of the years of service where you're kind of thinking, yeah, let's, if there is competition, if there was another applicant, let's, let's look to maybe make a change, you know? I guess what I'm trying to understand is, you know, is there a standard in terms of, you know, you've done a great job, you've served, maybe it's 20 years. We're now going to look to see if there's somebody else who's capable.
Yeah. So just to clarify, the three that, that are long-term incumbents that I'm not recommending as part of the proposed recommendations. All three of them started, and I believe this to be correct, I think it was like, two of them were 89, one of them was 90. It could have been earlier, but interestingly enough, when staff gave me the report, they were the only three that actually the, the data system, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the data system that staff uses to keep up on the dates of when people started their terms, there was actually no date in there for them at all, because, and they were only three that were like that, because the system is new and it doesn't capture data beyond, I can't remember what the year was.
So it is because of the way that the NCIP members used to be appointed through the engineering department and our records just weren't sufficient to show that far back when I did track that for those three members.
And so I just wanted to clarify that, because you said 2001. And when I said 2001 earlier, I was saying outside of those three, the, this, the longest-serving person outside of those three individuals, there, they've been serving on a board commissioner committee since 2001. So it is some, to your question, it is something that I've taken into consideration. And I think it's somewhat consistent with my values in regards to the comments that I made around term limits for the council. I mean, I think just the idea of kind of new, fresh perspectives. I very much appreciate the history, the knowledge, the experience that people come in that have been serving for a long time. There's nothing that precludes folks from continuing to provide that voice and perspective, whether it be in public comment or, or via email or in, in any, any other format. So yes.
And I have one more question. Sorry, Mr. Mayor. And so were there, how many of the positions that are being recommended are different from recommendations from the neighborhoods? And is it, is that, are the, are these three, the only three where there was a divergence was? And if there were divergences on others, if you could just kind of explain your rationale in those.
Yes, absolutely. Good question. So I'm just going to go through all the seats real quick, just so it's clear for everybody what, what the situation is. So Aguado Oaks, I appointed A.J. Purdy. He was the alternate. The long-serving rep decided to resign. Nobody else applied for that seat. So I moved him up to the rep seat.
Sorry, which association?
Aguado Oaks.
Okay.
Yeah. So we'll go in this by one by one. Alta Mesa is one of the ones that I changed out. I never heard anything from the neighborhood association on this one. So there, it, there was no divergence from feedback that I'd received from neighborhood association. Same thing with Casa Ova, Casa Nova Oaknoll, never heard anything from the neighborhood association in regards to that. But this is one of the ones I'm changing out, recommending to change out. Deer Flats, David Koik, so both the, and I'll get to the alternates in a second after the reps. But the rep and the alternate from Deer Flats both resigned. The neighborhood association did make a recommendation for both the rep and the alternate that I have, that I did select. Del Monte Beach, Jamie Fields, she's an incumbent I reappointed, didn't hear feedback from the neighborhood association one way or another on that one. Del Monte Grove Laguna Grande, Scott Hanson, never heard anything from the neighborhood association, but he is the incumbent. So I appointed, recommended reappointment to that one. Kurt Tipton, never heard anything from the neighborhood association, but he is, he is an incumbent. So I reappointed him to that one. Fish Flats is one of the three, is the last of the three. Never heard anything from the neighborhood association, but recommending something different than the alternate. Glenwood, never heard anything from the neighborhood association, but Lee Whitney is the incumbent and recommending her to stay on. Did I? Sorry, my notes are a little bit different here. Oak Grove, Louz Adam and the, oh, I should have just been following this all along. I apologize. Because I didn't realize that the alternates were here. I'm going to pause for a second and just go back and do the alternates for the rest of them. So Alta Mesa, there was no alternate for Alta Mesa, so I appointed Holly Ochoa. Casa Nova, Casa Nova Oaknoll, there was no alternate. The, the alternate resigned, so I was able to appoint an alternate to that one. But again, never got a recommendation from the neighborhood association. And, and by the way, there's a little bit of a side note that I would put here in that the neighborhood associations don't know who's applying. So, so it's hard for them to give a recommendation, but I was, but I would still be open to feedback if that was given. And I, and I actually have thoughts on how we might want to address that in the future, just to make it easier and more transparent. Deer Flats, I just spoke to that, the, the rep and alternate, they're, they're both new, both the original rep and alternate resigned. Downtown Kurt and Bella, they're both the incumbents. Fish Flats, Gary Bickers knew, as I said, Marilyn Maxner, she reapplied as an alternate, and so she was recommended. Oak Grove, so Louz Adam and Pat Erlinger didn't get a recommendation from the neighborhood association, but they're both the incumbents, so I, I recommend reappointing them. Old Town, Susan Ricketson was the alternate. And I selected her to be the rep. I originally recommended Joe Loverno for the alternate seat. He chose to withdraw and through that conversation with him, I found out that Rosemary Robert was their preferred recommendation. I didn't hear that directly from them, but I had that conversation with Joe afterwards. So I, and she was a good applicant, so I recommended her as well. Skyline Dennis Duke, long-term rep, incumbent, didn't hear from the neighborhood association, but recommended his continuation. And then Villa Del Monte, the prior rep resigned and Jill Johnson was the only one that applied, so recommended her. Yes. So the fair majority, I kept exactly the same. I was trying not to do too much change up. I obviously understand that it was going to create some tension and friction. But I thought it was a good way of trying to create some new voices, and again, from folks that I feel like are enthusiastic about being able to, to serve. And just because I, I brought it up, I, I do want to bring up a point. I had a conversation with staff around the, of how we can make this process more transparent, because I do want to be able to get feedback input from people in the community. So what I've recommended, and I'm, I, I think we're good to do this, is as soon as people apply, similarly to how we did the process for folks that were paying attention at that time, for the vacancy on the council, when Dan got off the council and people applied for that, staff would automatically put their application and their name online, so that people knew who was applying. So we're going to move forward with doing the same for NCIP. So as soon as people apply, their application will be redacted and available for public view. And anybody can provide feedback, whether it be a neighborhood association or otherwise. So that's, that's, I think, something that we're going to look at, at doing here. Okay. I think I saw a hand up over here. Councilor Smith?
Yeah, as I look through the list, I see several that I, I don't see in the application that they even applied for, being a rep for NCIP. So I'd like to know, how does one apply for, as an example, ARC or library board? And you interview them. It sort of flies in a, a complete opposite of what you were saying, where you're trying to find new people that might be joining, but a neighborhood that has a longstanding member with no alternative, all of a sudden is now replaced with a, a new rep and a new alternative or alternate, and neither of them have ever been involved, nor did that new recommended appointee even apply for this position. So I'm confused as to how you used a benchmark of criteria that you explained when you interviewed the applicants, when they didn't even apply for this position. So So how does that happen when they haven't even indicated that they have an interest for that, when the application's already been processed and received? Magically, they all of a sudden appear and are now recommended to be. So I need, I need more information about such criteria that you're using in this process of how you're filling out all this card.
Absolutely. Yep. So one of the questions that I ask applicants when I begin the interview is because as you all can see, the, there are more people applying than there are seats available. And sometimes a person can be good at many different, in many different spaces, on many different boards, commissions, and committees. So one of the first questions that I tend to ask folks when I'm interviewing them is, are you interested in any other board commissioner committee? And then there's language on the application, and I'm looking to Clementine because I'm trying to pull this up from one of the messages that we were going, but oh, here it is. There's language on the application that says, "Check the box next to all bodies on which you are interested in serving. More information is available at monterey.gov/BCC. Appointments are not limited to bodies checked." So I provide that opportunity for folks to, to because sometimes when people are filling out the application, they think, oh, I'm probably only good at this. They kind of self-limit themselves, but through the conversation and the experience that we have on the council and, and interacting with these different boards, commissions, and committees, I could say, no, no, you, you would be great at this, right? So it provides an opportunity to make sure that we're selecting the best folks and, and making it work. Sometimes I have five people there are, I want to select to put on Parks and Rec Commission, but maybe one of the people would be really good on Museum and Cultural Arts Commission too, because they have experience that qualifies for that. So it gives me an opportunity to say, well, you didn't check it, but would you be interested in it? And so I can, I, that's why sometimes you'll see it, that they didn't identify, self-identify on the application.
So that's the only question I have right now. I'll have lots more comment after I hear from the public.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Okay, okay. And with that, we will open it up to public comment. So we'll start off in the chamber. Anybody in the chamber wishes to speak on this item? I'll ask if you can either stand up to the left of the lectern or keep your hand, keep your hand down if you want to stay seated. I'll come back to the chamber here in a second. I'll wait for the folks to, that want to stand, and then let's check online real quick. We'll do a countdown for folks to use a raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. We have nine online. Okay. So we have four standing, and we have one, two, three, four, five, five sitting, so we have nine total in the chamber, nine online, eighteen. I'm, I'm okay with giving the three minutes. Okay, so why don't we go ahead and start in the chamber?
Hi, Jean Rash, Monterey Vista, longtime NCIP member for nine years. I was there in 2019 when the ordinance was made about the new terms and the process. I said it then when Clyde was mayor, and I say it, I've said it six times now. It should not be just the mayor doing these appointments. These interviews should be public. There should be two council members. It should be a very open, transparent process. You say, Mayor, that you used feedback for determining positions. I was never, as Monterey Vista Neighborhood Association President, contacted. The March meeting of the, of the Presidents of the Neighborhood Association was canceled. This one is delayed. We haven't met in a, in about a half a year minimum. You did, and we don't know who's applied. You did not reach out to Neighborhood Associations. It's very, very concerning, the lack of involvement that has been shown to the Neighborhood Associations. And you say, for these three people, it's not about their work. Well, then what is it? Is it some other criteria? And I, and I have to say this, and I'm the mother of a gay daughter, a trans granddaughter, a trans great-nephew, nephew, okay, have no issues. You mentioned diversity. No one on NCIP has ever wondered about the race of anybody, the age of anybody, whether they rented or owned. I have no idea who rents or owns on NCIP. I have no idea who they sleep with. So, you know, bringing in diversity, I, I know where you're going. We want enrichment. But what, what I want the criteria to be is, are they selected by their community? Has this gone through a Neighborhood Association? And has, has this person been involved? Do they know their neighborhood? Are they supported by their neighborhood? NCIP positions involve so much networking, so much, do you agree with this project? What do you think? Can we, can we modulate it? Can we, can we massage it to get you interested? It, you have to know your neighbors. It, it has to be from the bottom up, and that respect is not shown to the Neighborhood Associations through this process. It needs a lot of changing. I asked you personally if I could be there when, when Monterey Vista Neighborhood people were interviewed and you said no. You did say because the process had started, but we've discussed this for a long time. You know I felt this way. There has been no inclusion of the neighborhoods. That's my problem with the whole thing. I want people that know their neighborhood, that know the, the people that can do the very hard work. It is so incredibly hard. Thank you.
Hello, Tom Reeves with the New Monterey Neighborhood Association. It's not coincidence, and to the younger council members and the mayor, you may not know this history, but it's not coincidence that the Neighborhood Associations and the NIP started at about the same time. They're two arms of the same body. That's why we have our Neighborhood Associations as strong as we have. It was to give input, primarily, one of the main reasons for them was to give input to the NIP Committee. You're divorcing one from the other with this process you're going through. And it's, it's not healthy. It's not healthy for the community. It's not healthy for community input. I'm not opposed to term limits fundamentally. I think it's a good idea to get fresh ideas coming through, and diversity too. But I agree with Jean. I don't know that the neighborhoods have been, have been reached. I don't know if there was anybody who came to the neighborhoods and asked, do you have anybody who would like to apply? The deadline is such and such a date. It would be nice to get that. Term limits for NIP members are as challenging as they are for council members. It's not good to have people come and go. There's always history to these projects and to the neighborhoods. We had a neighborhood representative that kind of fell from the sky on us years ago. Never attended any of the meetings, claimed to represent our neighborhood, never came to any of our neighborhood meetings. And thankfully, they left as mysteriously as they appeared. Now we have a wonderful representative for us. Qualifications, you know, there was some mention, I don't know if it was in the staff report, that anybody can do this. Well, how does anybody get the input of the neighborhood? Do they stand out on a street corner? Do they knock on doors? How do they get that input? The answer is through the Neighborhood Associations. They've got to be working with the Neighborhood Association. We're not perfect. We're not 100% representative, and nor are you. You know, what, what was the voter turnout when you were elected? Think about it. I mean, we're trying our hardest to be representative of our neighborhood. And lastly, and the most important thing is the timing of this, it is awful. The process is still ongoing. It's, it ain't over in a year until you approve the budget. Now you're going to jerk these people out of the committee when the same projects might be coming back to the committee, and you're going to have a newbie on that with their jaw just kind of slack, like, I, I don't know what, what preceded me. I mean, you're just dropping them into the middle of a very important process. So please, I, I just implore you to delay the implementation or the appointing of these members, the new members, until after the budget is approved. At least do that. That would be good for this fiscal year. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Hello, Eric Palmer, Monterey Vista Neighborhood. Just wanted to respond to the last two speakers. This is your opportunity to give your recommendation and your reaction to whoever's being proposed. This is our chance for the public process. And I want to say that the outreach has been done by our city clerk has been outstanding, and we're all being given notifications when those nominations are coming out. So that's your opportunity to give your recommendations. I've been reading agenda reports for nearly 20 years, and one of my favorite reports is reading that full list of applications who apply for those boards and commissions, and this year's report was 220 pages long, and we had a historic 47 open seats. The number of applicants demonstrates the excitement of residents to volunteer for their community, and I enjoy it because you can see the broad range of expertise we have here. I like seeing the familiar names, their, their names in the hat, along with the many newcomers. I'm hearing that then some neighborhood represent, representatives, and I've heard from some residents that they believe that they should have the responsibility to nominate the appointments to NCIP, but what I really appreciate is the transparency of this process, where the public can read the full list of applications and qualifications, and then the mayor takes significant time to interview all of them, which could be very time-intensive in a council meeting, and then the full council votes and the public can comment, like we get the possibility to right now. NCIP representatives have major control over millions of dollars and major decisions for the future of our community. And we've been really lucky to have really excellent representatives. But we need an open dialogue because Oak Grove or New Monterey or Casa Nova Oak Knoll are not only approving projects for their neighborhood, but also projects that benefit and affect the community at large, and it shouldn't be done in closed doors. Not everyone could get involved in the NCIP program, process, or in their Neighborhood Associations. So we vote for council members who we believe can make important decisions, like appointing board and commission members. We do that with the president, for example, who appoint cabinet members and Supreme Court justices, and then Congress votes on those appointees. I feel good about the mayors and the council members I've had the opportunity to vote for, and and they're, they're making those important decisions. And if you don't approve of the appointees, which is subjective, it's time to vote. This is a democratic process that we need to preserve. I've appreciated the approach that my neighborhood has done, the Monterey Vista Neighborhood, who submit a recommendation letter for the proposed NCIP representative to the council, and that recommendation holds a lot of weight, and it should hold a lot of weight, because my neighborhood and the others are civically engaged, especially in the NCIP process. They, including our longtime president Jean Rash, who's done an outstanding job. As a city commissioner myself, I don't feel entitled to keeping my committee appointment. I, I have the attitude that I'm extremely privileged, privileged to be given four years, and but I also consider, I also want the council to consider other qualified people who'd like a turn to participate. And I don't think we should be discouraging any qualified resident from volunteering. I'm sure many of them are proud to be on that list, just like I was. Many of them are here, hopeful that they have the community and council support, and I hope that anyone who isn't selected and are veteran incumbents continue to participate because you can, and we're just talking about representatives here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Gabe Sanders. I'm a resident of Old Town and a renter. I can speak to this, I suppose, from the perspective of the work I've been doing for the last few years around housing policy, which has been really largely focused on examining the structures that have held people where they are in terms of where they can live, where they can afford to live, where power has been concentrated politically, where people of different races, different backgrounds have been able to move freely or not. There's been a lot of intervention happening from our state government that a lot of people may have opinions about in this room, but it's seeking to address disparities, seeking to give opportunity to diverse populations to live in places where they otherwise wouldn't be able to, where they are nonetheless contributing to the economy, contributing to culture, contributing to community. And I think we've seen a parallel here in the conversation around these, the NCIP. The structures that created these neighborhoods, whether they are 40 years old, whether the representatives in them have been in it for decades or not, have resulted in a lot of good developments, good culture. And nonetheless, you know, I'm, I'm part of a neighborhood that was probably populated by a lot of people older than me who own the home where I currently live that I rent. And I'm really excited to see what can happen when you bring in people with new voices, new perspectives, to continue improving these communities. So I think we should embrace the possibility of change, embrace the idea that looking at these structures and making sure that they are examined and really renewed with some level of regularity. I, I think that's a great idea, and I'm looking forward to seeing the results. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, my name is Rick Hoyer, and as you could, are well aware, I'm one of the infamous three, I guess, that, but that's not what I'm here to speak about. Thirty-seven years ago, the city of Monterey was a very different place. It was a place where city bureaucrats had their own agenda and neighborhoods had no role in that. You had a council in particular who had their own agenda and neighborhoods had no role in it. NCIP was, or NIP was created specifically to give a voice to the neighborhoods and to ensure that funds went to improve the neighborhoods, and as the neighbors have done, improve the rest of the city as well. And it was additional new funds that were created to do it, so it wasn't taking away from existing city prospects. Through the intervening years, it's been very successful, and what it's done especially has brought the city together and has also encouraged cooperation between and a much better role of the city and its neighbors, businesses, hospitality, and all the rest. What worries me is that today I'm seeing a scenario where it is appearing that we once again have bureaucrats with their own agenda. And I'm not seeing yet council being to the way it was 37 years ago, but I'm seeing elements of it starting to happen. And I'm not talking about tonight's meeting. I'm talking about the previous meetings as they relate to charter measures and other aspects of basically failing to understand exactly what NIP is about and what it does. And I hope that changes, and it doesn't tend to be. Just as a, I am glad you were able to find people in my neighborhood to serve. I know one of them actually applied to multiple commissions, and that's fine, you chose which one to have her be an alternate on instead of being a primary on another commission. If that were me, I would have rather been a primary in a different commission than an alternate, but that's just me. The other thing to understand is there has historically been a lot of diversity, and yes, I've been on NCIP since it began, but what you may not realize is the first 25 years of that, I was a renter, representing the city on there, and we've had other renters through the years. Most people don't realize, I have not represented Alta Mesa for 37 years. I was the, the rep for Old Town for the first half, half or more of that time, because I also helped found that Neighborhood Association with others so that it could participate in NIP. I think we need to take a hard look at what is going on and bring discussions back to have a dialogue with NCIP, which you voted to do at your last meeting, thanks to council member Barbara in particular. Unfortunately, you're going to not have a lot of people there who have a lot of history to that, although I plan to attend as the public, but I may get my two minutes, which is a bit of a challenge. I also would recommend in the future that you give the chair time at meetings where it's relevant to that to speak to you more than just three minutes. Because they bring and speak for the commission, and historically, that's how it was always done at the council, where the chair or others would have more time to actually participate with you and give that information. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council, staff members. My name is Brian Perez. I live in District Four. I came up here in 2019. I worked for a neighboring law enforcement agency, been in law enforcement for about 21 years now. I've been in the Marine Corps Reserves for about 26 years, poised to retire from both finally, so I'm going to have a lot of time on my hands here soon. 2011, during one of my combat deployments, when I was sitting in a MRAP about 11,000 miles away from here, I realized when I came home, I'm going to live, I'm going to go from the ugliest place in the world, and I'm going to come live in the most beautiful place in the world. And that's what I've done the last five years. I have no regrets moving from up here from Southern California. This is probably one of the most beautiful places on earth, and I want to keep it that way. Anything I can do at this point. Mayor, you mentioned that you, I think you mentioned in one of your meetings that, you know, commanding officers in the Marine Corps, or excuse me, in the military in general, they've got a two-to-three-year lifespan, and then you get a new breed in. I think you mentioned something like that, and that's true. I've been a commanding officer. When I was a commanding officer, there was a lot of subject matter expertise in my unit that I relied on, and just thinking about, you know, replacing them with folks right out of boot, boot camp would have been unheard of. And I'm not saying that's maybe the greatest analogy, but I came to one of those NCIP meetings, and you got a lot of subject matter expertise, and you're making a lot of big, bold adjustments right now. I, I don't agree with that. Okay. Not the reason why I'm going to do this, but I am going to be running for District Four. I live in the Laguna Grande neighborhood. This is something, yeah, it's, like I said, This is something, yeah, it's, like I said, I'm going to have a lot of time on my hands, and unfortunately, I don't have a website yet. Murder Line and Truth is already taken, so I got to work on that. But, yeah, anyway, I hope you, I hope you make, take everybody's recommendations here in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Been a while. Susie Allen. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay. So I wanted to speak about the Monterey Way. My understanding is it's a collaborative process. We give and take. It leads to compromise, where everyone may not get exactly what they want, but everyone is heard, and their voices matter. NCIP reps have served for many years, some of them for decades. They're being summarily dismissed and replaced with newcomers, which haven't even been involved in the process at all. It just doesn't make sense. This process doesn't seem necessary or transparent. Are the current reps not doing their jobs? If it isn't broken, why the fix? What's the logic? Wouldn't it not make sense to bring in newcomers as alternates first, to learn from the experienced reps? Receiving mentoring and insights into the process? The newcomers bring their new, fresh ideas, and have the opportunity to glean from the experience and wisdom of the longer-serving reps. To me, that feels more collaborative and inclusive. Gina Garcia, you're my District Four rep, and I'm asking you to deny the recommended changes and keep the reps as they are. Thank you.
You did. Was there anybody else that was sitting that didn't speak yet in the chamber, just to kind of get a sense? Did you have your hand up at the beginning? Okay, perfect.
I have a bad knee, so I didn't.
You're good. You were so good. Please.
So Esther Malkin, speaking as the president of the Neighborhood Association of Laguna Grande. I just want to remind everybody who's citing history here that the process that is being used to appoint this time around was put in place by the previous mayor. And when that mayor did the same process and handled it exactly the same way as the current mayor is doing it, none of these people had a problem with it. Why? Because he rubber-stamped whoever was on there, because at the time, nobody was applying. The city staff did a tremendous amount of outreach. It was shown in the presentation. Did none of the neighborhood board members see any of that? To reach out to their neighborhood, ask if anybody was interested? How could they have possibly missed all that outreach? So to say that they didn't have an opportunity is kind of disingenuous. Because of the way NCIP was going on and on for so long, there was a grand jury report that came out that specifically mentioned that one of the main reasons why there weren't a lot of, there wasn't a lot of change in the NCIP applicants is because there were none. So the same people were there, but it recommended that we bring in new voices and have more people represent all the different voices of a neighborhood and the city. So I just don't understand how, all of a sudden now, everybody's so up in arms over something that when Clyde did it, when he changed the process, nobody had a problem with it. And he did it after the grand jury report came out. I don't understand why everybody's acting like everybody's been taken off that has served on the NCIP before. That's not the case. There are people that have been on this NCIP committee that are still staying on. They just haven't been on it for thirty-seven or thirty-eight years. So their knowledge comes along with it. There were a number of alternates that were put into the main representative spot. So I think everybody's just trying to sway this to benefit whatever it is their agenda or responses are to something that they don't know history of, and if they do, they're ignoring it. Because if you guys are pissed about this, you should have gone after Clyde. This council can change it, the same way Clyde did, but there's a process. And to claim that this is all being done without transparency, how is that possible when the city did tons of outreach? So I'm sorry to disagree with so many of you, but I'm very active, and my NCIP rep is also, and we communicate with our board. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm not sure that gets high enough for me, but, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, hello. I'm Joel Fogel, the president of the Del Monte Beach Neighborhood Association. As I'm sure that it's important to all of the neighborhoods, the Neighborhood Community Improvement Program is strongly supported by those of us in Del Monte Beach. Traditionally, the NCIP representatives are chosen by our neighbors and then sent to the mayor for approval. It's very important that the neighbors know and work with their NCIP representatives, and that's very active in our community. Recently, we had someone appointed as an alternate for our neighborhood NCIP, without knowledge, while the Neighborhood Association had a candidate to put forward who wanted the job. The current recommended changes of representatives takes away good people with years of awareness of their neighborhood needs and replaces them with people unknown to the neighborhood and with little knowledge of the neighborhood's needs. Though the NCIP representative is a nonpartisan position, it's been pointed out to me by someone in our neighborhood that all the new appointments seem to be from one political party. I would ask, how does this approach demonstrate working with the neighborhoods? The Del Monte Beach Neighborhood's Association, or rather, Del Monte Beach Neighborhood strongly supports the NCIP, its current program, and its neighborhood representatives. Thank you.
So crazy. Please, let's go online.
First, I'll call in Tammy. Hi. I have a couple things. One is, am I still on the NCIP as the alternate? It wasn't on that list. I called today. They said I was still on it, but I'm still confused. Number two, experience and history and knowledge is something that you can't fake, you can't read about. I mean, yes, you can read about it. Let me put it a different way. The knowledge that somebody has that has been doing something for a while versus a new person coming in with no knowledge and no history and no background, there's no comparison. Yes, I believe in getting new blood in. I believe in getting new turnover, but the people have to want it, and the neighborhoods need a person that has been there. If they've been there and they want to continue doing it, I would choose them over a new person that maybe could be an alternate and work into being the rep. But to be thrown into this situation with no background, I feel it's going to be a tumultuous and difficult next year. And I thank you for the people that did apply and that want to be involved, but throwing out good people for new people or old people that have the history versus the new people that are new, newbies, I just don't agree with. And at some point, I hope somebody will tell me if I am the alternate for Villa Del Monte or not. Thank you.
Next is Lori.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just have to first address, like, what does the mayor mean that he never heard anything from neighborhood associations regarding these appointments for the NCIP? The mayor never asked. As a matter of fact, my neighborhood president, Joe Fogel, who just spoke a few minutes ago, he's been trying for months to get the mayor to answer multiple messages he's left to have discussions and never received a response. And he's canceled several presidents' meetings over the past month or two, and we would absolutely have been engaged as a board, but we were never asked. And as I said at a prior meeting, the mayor did these interviews behind closed doors with zero public involvement. So for him, I think that's disingenuous to stand up and say you wanted input from the neighborhoods because you didn't ask. It's just unfair and wrong. So I'm speaking today to protest all the appointment recommendations made by Mayor Williamson for this committee and all the reps and alternates, because this selection process was flawed. I'm dismayed with the dictatorial style the mayor has taken on and away from the neighborhoods and from the individuals who currently hold these positions in good standing. It's clear by the removal and the replacement choices made exclusively by the mayor aid in the city's manager campaign to dismantle NCIP and to grab the power and control of it, and, yep, absolutely, probably down the line, take the money. There's no other explanation that I can see other than that, given that more than fifty percent of the current neighborhood reps were outright replaced with people having no NCIP involvement, experience, and some who are new, brand-new, of state and Monterey area. Two key reps removed were founders of this unique engaging community program, and they dedicated decades of their lives to volunteering and serving this city on a neighborhood's behalf. And where's the justification in discarding people like this and not even leaving them on as alternates to serve as mentors? Good Lord, even Luke Skywalker needed mentors. In my comments letter today, I included two pages from the civil grand jury review of the NIP from 2019, and an org chart that shows the Monterey citizens are clearly in charge of the mayor and the city council, not the other way around. The passage reads that in the report, that each neighborhood chooses one representative and alternate to serve on the NIP, and then they are approved and appointed. So I think we need to go back to basics and go back to that. And Mayor Williamson ran on a platform of civic engagement, moving Monterey forward. Well, this is your civic engagement, and this is us speaking, and this is not the way Monterey way, nor the way to be moving forward.
Next is Chineri.
Hello. So I, my name's Chineri Obona. I'm a New Monterey resident, as well as the New Monterey NCIP rep. I did want to speak on my experience, because I think it was a little bit different than others. I actually found out about applying for NCIP on an ad that was on Nextdoor, and I wanted to get involved, and so I decided to apply. I really didn't think that I would be appointed to anything, but I thought, why not? So I actually applied before knowing about my Neighborhood Association, but I will say through that process, I was able to start attending Neighborhood Association meetings and connect with my Neighborhood Association and other neighbors, and I think that was a very valuable process. So I do think there is a place for having an open application process that does include people who are nominated by the Neighborhood Association, as well as people who aren't nominated by the Neighborhood Association, and I think that it can be a way for people to become more involved with their community, because that was kind of the path that I took. I do think that in terms of transparency, you know, there wasn't really a way to know who was applying for what position. So I do think and agree with others that it was on the onus on the mayor to reach out specifically to neighborhood associations to see if they had any input on anyone that was applying, and I agree with what's been discussed about trying to make that process more transparent. I'm not opposed to there being term limits, although I do question why the terms end on June 30th, and I'm not sure about other committees or commissions, if they have kind of like a cycle. But with NCIP, we do kind of have a cycle. So our next meeting is, for this cycle, is in August, and then we will submit recommendations to the city council, and that usually happens around September. And once that is reviewed and change is made or approved, that typically is what I would consider to be the end of the NCIP cycle. So if I were to make a recommendation, I would ask that the council consider allowing the current committee members to complete this whole cycle prior to doing the reappointments, and then also reconsider June 30th for NCIP and for other councils or other commissions and committees, if appropriate. I also had the benefit of being an alternate for a year, and that was invaluable in learning the process. I remember watching YouTube videos to kind of figure out what I was doing. It was very overwhelming at first, so I do value having that year experience as an alternate prior to applying for the rep position and serving as the rep. So there is definitely a lot of value in being able to learn from other longer-serving reps, especially when you're starting out. Thank you.
Next is JB.
Hello, Jamie Fields. I'm the vice chair of the NCIP committee. I'm currently out of town, but I wanted to share some info. I think that the work that everyone has done to get us to this point is great, and new participants are appreciated, but I would like to suggest that we pause to look again at the proposed appointments to the NCIP. This is because there's a difference between ordinances and procedures. As we can see in the recent grand jury report, the ordinance says that the NCIP representatives are chosen by the neighborhoods for ratification by the city council, chosen by the neighborhoods for ratification. The procedure that the city council has used to implement its ratification was simplified a few years ago into review by a single person, and that's okay. But that ratification procedure cannot go against the ordinance that representatives are chosen by the neighborhoods. The NCIP and city council have not had an opportunity to meet and share information like this. You know, the neighborhoods could benefit themselves from that city clerk's outreach campaign. That's amazing. The neighborhoods were not aware that they had the opportunity to participate and to make recommendations, particularly as they have no idea who's applying. I think it's important that the city council consider the wishes of the neighborhoods before they ratify the list of NCIP members, as that's the way this whole thing was structured, and the procedure should not wag the tail of the ordinance dog. The ordinance is what's key, that is the coming from the neighborhoods. So can we table this today and assess what the best way is to move forward? I mean, it's hard, it's all here, we want to just get it done. There's been a lot of work, but maybe we table this and look at a way to bring the neighborhood representatives and the neighborhoods' input in, because that is the way the NCIP program was designed from the beginning. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Robert.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Robert Evans, and I live in New Monterey. The NCIP, NIP program has always been a thorn in the side of the city manager. The thought of even a small chunk of money out of his control has been an irritant, an irritant. In this year, this year, the accounting department finally cleaned up the books, and NIP has ten million to spend. This has triggered an unprecedented series of attacks on NIP, including a proposal to amend the city's charter in ways that will change the NIP away from its original intent, the submission of numerous citywide multi-neighborhood projects, some of which should be a part of the city's capital improvement program, and finally, and most recently, the discharge of experienced NIP committee members, potentially eliminating the institutional memory of NIP in hopes of taking control of this unique and wonderful program. What could be more democratic than having citizen advice on the matter of neighborhood improvement? New Monterey is the neighborhood on the other side of the tunnel, one that was laid out in eighteen eighty-nine, but slowly developed over the years in a kind of haphazard way. Our infrastructure is sorely in need of improvement. NIP has been the go-to program. NIP has been the go-to program for from very local to block size improvements. Change for the sake of change is a path to nowhere. Rather than focus, rather, the focus should be on thoughtful improvements that add value and elevate. The processes without losing sight of the community's goals. Thanks.
Nice and short.
Next is Christina.
Hello, Mayor Williamson and esteemed members of the council. First of all, I want to say thank you very, very much for all the work that you do. My name is Christina Medina Dirksen and I'm here to talk a little bit about. Remind you of when you went door to door during your campaigns and you met your constituents and how excited you were and how even more excited they were to meet you. And I can probably tell you, you were looking for ways to get them involved and get them in the pipeline. So before you, you have a good problem. You have a lot of people who are interested in becoming part of the civic discourse in your city. So having gone through a similar process in my city. While there are people who have really laid the foundation and the good work. Um, I think allowing others to bring a different skill sets to the table or um, different. I shouldn't say different, but really build off the ideas and the work that is done. That's how we progress. So that being said, um, I I just want to say, uh, there's a candidate there. Shelley Mauch Schmidt, who's been a dear friend of mine for 25 years, the first person I ever met when I came to Monterey County and I lived in Monterey. So to see her grow and her interest in serving her community is really thrilling to see and is a good example for so many of us. Um, people there before you are leaders in their own neighborhoods. She has an incredible skill set that she will bring to this um, to your city. And she already has as a member of the architectural review committee. So to those of you who who say um, we have a great foundation, why mess with it? You know, it it's hard to hear await your turn in this day and age. I think um, there is a discretion that comes with being a member of the city council and the mayor. And if if there's people that are found to have a skill set that will bring more to the table. I'm, I commend you for being brave enough and opening uh, or or making the table longer. So that said, um, thank you all for being there and all of you who have stepped up and showed an interest in your city. Please continue to do so because that's, that's all about, that's what democracy is. So that's all. Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Richard Rucello.
Good evening, Monterey City Council. Richard Rucello, president of the Casanova Neighborhood Association and one of the famous three that's been there a long time. Just to clarify, I've been serving as a volunteer in Monterey my entire life. Well over 60 years of volunteerism. To to go to the association question why we didn't nominate a person. I got the call from the mayor at 4:30 last Friday that he was going to replace me. And he specifically said for somebody younger with a different viewpoint. Uh, I did not get the agenda to say who was applying until 5:30 last Friday. How could our association vote? How can our association have a meeting? We were never asked. So that's the transparency issue and understand that creates a lot of animosity in the community. I've received many, many support letters and you have too, uh, about my participation in NCIP. But I would like to bring up a legal issue we have with NCIP. Our rule on voting is that any person that is part of NCIP. Attend or see every meeting, hear all public comments, all staff comments before they can vote. They can't vote if they're not qualified. So the vote we took last week was not our final vote. It was a temporary vote. Our final vote is on August 8th. We have hip pocket estimates on the projects we approve. We will not get the final estimates, the detailed estimates on the real prices until August 8th. And then NCIP will vote on whether if a project tripled or quadrupled in costs. Whether we should leave it on the list or take it off. But uh, I don't know how my replacement is going to handle that or what the city attorney says over that adopted city policy. But I will say, after serving the city of Monterey well over 60 years. I feel so disrespected, especially on my age and getting somebody younger. Is not a reason for a difference. The reason for a difference is performance. And um, I'm seriously considering what I'm going to do from now on. Because I've never, ever in my entire life received comments like that about me. Not on my performance. And I thank you for your time. And um, I'm just disappointed in this council and this staff and what is going on. Thank you.
And our last speaker is a telephone caller with the last three digits, 837.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Can you hear me? Yes, I try. When I tried to speak earlier, I heard that I was beeped out. Every, um, you could hardly hear anything that I said. My name is Brian Rosen. And I feel maybe I'm being discriminated against. Am I being beeped out from my conversing with you right now?
We can hear you loud and clear. You're good.
Okay, because I was beeped out earlier. I don't know why. Maybe you didn't like what I had to say, but I was. And I want to say this, discrimination is wrong. Any kind of discrimination is wrong. Only mediocre people discriminate against anybody for any reason. The Supreme Court has declared affirmative action illegal. I voted for a black woman for president. I've signed petitions when a black young student was discriminated against when she had the best essay in her school. And discriminating against anybody based on for any reason is wrong. Asian Americans have done extremely well. They're over their amount of the population in the universities, all the more power to them. You know, and so this discrimination business is illegal, unethical and wrong. And nobody should be discriminated against, including older people who have been on these boards for a long time. You know, there's no such thing as being equal. You know, people are of different abilities and there's subjective bias, maybe mediocre people maybe choose mediocre people regardless of the skin color. But it would seem to me that, you know, if 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 you really think everything is equal, put the two. Uh, names in a hat and choose them at random, but don't choose based on the sex or the race or the skin color. And there's other elements of diversity other than sex, race or skin color. For example, you know, we're getting more diversity in those respects. But what about income? When we, we have a society run by the wealthy that all the people are pretty wealthy that run the society. So that's not diversity. This diversity is a code word for discrimination, just so Orwellian, this whole thing. Um, and it's so wrong and it's it's leading to, we have such a mediocre government and that's all we care about is the skin color or the sex. And so I think what you need to do is throw out all this diversity business. It's hypocritical. It it's Orwellian, black is white, white is black, et cetera. And 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 it's not what's happening. I mean, if you're discriminating and you're saying that you're trying to get this diversity, then you're discriminating. And so that's my comment. Do not discriminate against anybody for any reason. Just choose on the merit, please.
That's the end of, there were two people who had their hands raised well after you you made the cutoff, Mr. Mayor, but those were the nine who had their hands raised.
Okay. All right. First and foremost, I did not discriminate against anybody in this process. So Richard Rucello's comment is a complete fabrication. I never, never, I didn't think it, never mind say it out loud. Anything about replacing him with somebody younger. That is just false. It is not true. I didn't, he didn't ask me. I didn't tell him that. So I, just for the record, I want to set that straight, that there was no discrimination in this process. I want to pass it to Chrissy real quick, um, so we can clarify. Jamie Fields made some comments around the, the, the process and procedures. And so I'm just hoping that Chrissy, you could, could describe that for us, please.
Sure. Um, she was referencing some ordinances and I just want to clarify what the actual law is because she did misstate the law. Um, so specifically the NCIP um, is established in the city's charter. And there is an ordinance that is set forth in 2-13.01. And it specifically says that committee representatives shall represent the interests of all residents and property owners within their jurisdiction. Committee representatives do not represent the interest of any neighborhood associations within their jurisdiction, if any. There is nothing in the city charter and nothing in the city's ordinances that require membership of any uh, association. Or that the association somehow get to control um, appointments or nominations. I would submit that that would be not a lawful process. You can't precondition. Assignment on this committee by whether or not they're a member of an organization. So I just wanted to clarify that. I'm not sure what, where she got that misinformation from.
Okay. Thank you, Chrissy, for that clarification. I'm going to get through.
A question from.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah, um, Chrissy, is there, is there anything, and forgive me for not knowing, it's, it's the legal side. It, is there anything in there that spells out the requirements of the voting member of NCIP that they have to have? Attended all meetings, all the process in order to vote to represent their position. So in other words, if we have the former and they're replaced by action of the council tonight, we have new ones. Do they have the standing to be able to participate and vote between now and August or September?
So there's nothing in the charter or the code. There is a policy and procedures manual and I would need to go back and check that. But my understanding is that the voting did already take place and that this next meeting, it's determining the cutoff projects. So if there were new people um, assigned to that role, I would suggest that they watch the last NCIP meeting where the voting took place. So they would be um, informed, but I I would want a second to just check the um, manual. It's a different, it's a different um, stage of the process because the voting has already occurred. But I don't know that that would preclude somebody from determining the cutoff project, projects at this next meeting.
Yeah, and and that's important for me to have that, that knowledge as, as the process goes forward before it comes finally to the council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your follow on questions there. I'm going to try to run through a few um, other responses. And again, this is a little bit unorthodox because usually I go to my colleagues first for, for comments. Um, but because this has to do with my recommendations, I just want to be able to make sure I address a few things and hopefully it gets to some of the concerns that you all have raised or that you want to raise. So I want to clarify for the record that um, the comments around me reaching out to NCIP. I'm sorry, neighborhood associations is absolutely true. I didn't reach out to the neighborhood associations and that was intentional on my part. If I reach out to any stakeholder, I'm opening the door for everybody to give me feedback and input and engage in a dialogue. I was intentional around keeping the process intact. And and upholding that process so that it was fair and equitable for everybody that applied. So that's why I am recommending to staff that moving forward, we post. The applications online as they come in and anybody in the community can send the mayor feedback on those. On those that applied. But for me to reach out to a specific neighborhood association, that's giving exclusive advantage to that group of people. And saying that I'm not going to do the same for any other individual or group that might have interest in providing feedback or input. I'm doing this for equity, for fairness. So I just wanted to to clarify that. I never alluded to the idea of reaching out to anybody and I understand. That we're still trying to figure, fine tune the process here, which is why I made the, the proposal as how we move forward with that. A classic example of me taking feedback, to your point, Gene Rash. When you got off the NCIP, you put a letter together, presented it to your neighborhood association that. I recommended to the council to appoint Hans Janisch. That's exactly what I did because I took the feedback from the neighborhood association. In kind, I also took the recommendation from the neighborhood association to appoint John Sovereign. That didn't work out too well. For anybody that wants to do some Google searching on the legal issues that that gentleman got into. Um, and the issues that that caused for staff, it happens. I'm not pointing the finger. But the point that I'm trying to make is sometimes people come in to any of the boards, commissions or committees that aren't a good fit. Let's have that conversation and let's figure out how we get the right people in the right place. But let's stop pointing fingers and casting blame on people for sometimes the wrong people getting on it. I'm going to stand here today by the recommendation that I made, I feel confident, 100% confident. That the people that I have, that I'm recommending for the replacement are going to do a wonderful job. Chaneri's point, I think, is another prime example of somebody who came in that didn't have experience in interacting with the neighborhood association. And she is a superstar. She is doing great work and actively engaged on the NCIP. So just another classic example, I think, to debunk that idea that you have to be engaged in your neighborhood association in order to step up and be involved. Del Monte Beach, Joe. Your comment on the alternate, oh, what was I going to say here? All I can say is that the process is public. And if somebody resigns from the NCIP, I imagine that. The neighborhood association is going to be paying close attention to when that seat is advertised and when it becomes available. And the neighborhood association can do all the legwork in the world to find somebody to put forward. And just like Mono Vista did, Monterey Vista did, give me a recommendation so that I can consider. I think that another, another comment that was made, it it baffles my mind a little bit around. Truly the lies that are being put out today. Like they're, they're, they're just not true and there's, and they're said in the form of fact and they're not true. You made a statement about me selecting people that are from a certain political party. That was not a factor in my determination of recommendations for any of the boards, commissions or committees. You can ask anybody that I interviewed. I never asked anybody what their political affiliation was. I I I just don't understand why we're trying to create a certain type of narrative when that never came up in anything that I said. Or I imagine, I can't believe that it came from anybody that I interviewed because that never was part of the process. So just clarifying that for the record, never looked at anybody's political affiliation and the determination of my recommendations. I can't remember who said this. It might have been Gene who said this about how nobody on the NCIP looks at diversity. The fact of the matter is that we all live in the same world. This idea of being colorblind is um, I think, short sighted at best. And and I know people might want to think that that's true, but we are all born in the same world and there are signs that are given to us that. Create disadvantages for all sorts of communities. You stood up here, Gene, and you were talking about the good old boys, which I would disagree that I'm part of any type of good old boys. In fact, I'm a strong advocate for women's rights and you know this because I stand in the same room as you that you, that you show up in. And to say that those voices don't deserve a disproportionate amount of benefit on, in positions of power. It, it, it just countered to the point that you had said earlier. So I just wanted to clarify. So I just wanted to clarify that for the record, that you all might get along very well on the NCIP, but it doesn't remove the fact of the need for representation in regards to diversity. I never said to institute term limits. I was only referencing it in regards to the value set that I had spoken to at the last council meeting. So I just wanted to clarify that. I never said anything about moving forward with term limits on NCIP. We are going to be, just for the record, for folks that maybe didn't listen into the last council meeting. As soon as public comment was over, after staff gave their proposal around changes to the NCIP, again, that none of us on the council saw until it was available to the public. The first thing that I said after the public comment was the need for us to take a pause and have a joint session between the NCIP and the council so that we can engage in more communication and dialogue. Again, transparency. There was a comment, I think, made around new commanders coming to the area and some, something that I made around new, fresh ideas. I, I think the point there is that there's value in longstanding members as part of an organization because of the institutional experience that they bring. I would just clarify again that the majority of folks on NCIP are longstanding members. Some served all the way back since 2001. So I'm not like recommending that we clean house and we start anew. I wanted to, I was intentional about making sure that my recommendation include diversity of not just race, sex, sexual orientation or whatever, right? It was also diversity of thought and experience. So that I think is very much included in my recommendation. And I think I just want to speak to this. I already spoke to that. All right. I'll open it up to my colleagues now. Who wants to start us off? Councilor Garcia.
Thank you. And thank you to all, all folks who came in and shared your thoughts, present and, and online. For me to start, it's important to express appreciation for folks who have served 10, 20, 30, 60 years. I, I think this, what we're doing here tonight is not meant to undermine all that great work and dedication and commitment that you've, you've shown over the years. So I, I want to start with that. Again, expressing my appreciation for, for doing the, the work, the, the work in community. I also want to express appreciation to staff and the mayor for taking up quite a task. I mean, we're talking about trying to fill 47 seats, reviewing 62 applications. That's, that's no easy task. Lots of outreach, scheduling, interviewing, and then ultimately compiling this information, putting it in a, in a way that's presentable and digestible. No easy task. There were various items that members here tonight or this afternoon have presented that needed addressing and, and I encourage further conversation with NCIP in good, good faith and collaborative, collaboratively to enhance a board that at its essence should be democratic and participatory. So let's continue those conversations. I, I wanted to touch quickly on a point that was brought up earlier with city attorney here. Something that came up in this process that I noticed is, is something that struck me not, not only being a council member, but also just being a resident of a specific neighborhood. To me, it felt a little uncomfortable how current, a current NCIP reps who are neighborhood association presidents, they're using the platform of the neighborhood association to advocate for their appointment to NCIP. I think that's something that we really need to look at because I understand that there's some overlap there that could happen. But we need to more clearly define those boundaries, I think. Another point that I wanted to, to raise is that I hear mention about folks who were not appointed, were not selected, that they're going to get removed completely. I don't think that's true. Incumbents who have not been selected, they still can and should be encouraged to remain active as community leaders and mentors for the newly appointed. That's, that's how this process becomes a, a community process and participatory. Even if they're not formally reps, they could still be very much part of this process. So today we're focusing on the appointments and in an effort to encourage that democratic and participatory process, I'm going to support the mayor's recommendations, which include the new additions to the board. And, and I really appreciate the applicant's willingness to participate and be involved in this way with their communities.
So Rob.
So I'd begin by saying, although these recommendations are not the recommendations I would make. However, I didn't get to interview all of the applicants. So the mayor has information and insights that I don't have. It's a whole nother conversation if, if this is the right process, but this is the process. It's a process we've been using for, I think, pretty close to six years or so now, six, seven years now. So I think a mayor should be accorded a large discretion when it comes to making appointments to board and commissions. I also recall that when Mayor Clyde, I can't remember if it was right after he was elected in 2014 or a couple of years after, he made some pretty significant changes to some of our other boards and commissions and remove some longstanding planning commission and I think ARC members. That was very controversial at the time. And I did support the mayor then. Again, because the mayor interviews all of the applicants, we as council in this process do not. And I, again, I think a mayor should be afforded, accorded a fair amount of discretion. Now, all of that being said, I do think that this process has some problems. And I think some of that became apparent in the public comment. So one of the challenges, how do neighborhoods communicate their feedback to the mayor as part of this process? I don't think just doing it here is really adequate because the recommendations are made. Council members are likely to support the mayor. So I don't think this, this is part of the process, but I don't think this is really the best way to engage in community, community engagement. What is the best way? I'm not sure. You know, should the mayor have reached out to the neighborhood? Should they have reached out to him? You know, when was all of the full list of applicants known and, and available to them? Was it made available to them? You know, I think we probably could have done better on that. There was some challenges that I think Tom Reeves and Chenario Blata brought up as far as the timeline. That is maybe not as important to some of the other boards and commissions, but I think is important to this one. So I'm just wondering if we make this, these appointments to NCIP tonight, how is that going to affect the processes it plays out over the next few months? Because, you know, it sounds like some of the work of the NCIP continues through into August. So I, in general, I am, I'm willing to support the mayor's recommendations. But I, I would request that we consider delaying the appointment of NCIP. And I also think it would be worthwhile for the mayor during that interim, while kind of the current committee kind of finishes up their work, to give the neighborhoods the opportunity to hold meetings, invite him, invite the NCIP applicants, give them a chance to speak and get to know each other. I do think that this committee is a little different than other committees because the importance of being connected to your neighborhood and your neighborhood association, which aren't necessarily the same thing. But having a lot of connections is really especially important to this, this particular board. And so I, my recommendation to the mayor is let's delay that part of the appointment. Give you some more time to kind of meet with neighborhoods, hear more feedback. And then maybe in August, I'm not sure what the best time is. I'm seeing the city manager shake his head, but I'm not sure when, you know, when the best time would be. Yeah, those are my thoughts. Thank you. But i- is it, is it within our authority to table that part of the appointment until later? Okay, it is. Thanks.
Could, while we're on that thought, could, could we just clarify what that, what the feedback is for staff?
Sure, the NCIP policy manual, section seven, which outlines committee member responsibilities. It says that they are to attend project review meetings or review the video of the project review meeting if absent prior to voting at the project selection meeting. So that's dealing with project selection meeting. I think they're past that. If I'm understanding correctly, that happened at the last meeting and now it's just determining the cutoff projects based on the dollars. So the list of projects has been established and it's just where, where does it cut off is the last question that's pending.
But there are still, I mean, there's still final determination by council in terms of budget. There's the cutoffs. I mean, there are still a lot of pretty important decisions that'll happen.
Right. And, and the code does allow for terms to be shortened or extended depending on the best interest of that particular committee, the circumstances. So you, you do have some flexibility with that.
Councilor Smith.
Yeah, so the way I approach this, I'm going to use a sports analogy. If I'm the coach and I've got a big game on Sunday and I've got experienced lineman and a center who snaps the ball to the quarterback, who by the way, happens to be a rookie too. Because I'm a 49er fan. So I've got two tackles and they're all pros, been around a long time, highly, highly proficient. No mistakes, performance is high. It's about skills and I'm the coach making the decision about, are they ready for the game and the skills? And then I decide I'm just going to replace those two because I'd really like to have more experience for the next game in two weeks. And so I take two rookies that I just drafted, who just arrived in training camp. And I replace my two experienced tackles who are going to protect the quarterback and the center. And those two rookies are now playing the game Sunday, just so they can get experience. It doesn't make sense to me when I look at the expansive list of replacements where in some cases we have longstanding, high performance, very knowledgeable, been involved and represent and vote honorably in their neighborhood. And all of a sudden they're out and I'm going to use Altamasa as an example. Somebody is replaced and two rookies are assigned. And neither of them have ever been an alternate. Why, why not stay with the person that's proficient in the position and grab one of the others as an alternate because there hasn't been an alternate? So I don't understand the process of an entire sweep of replacement where you have so much loss of respected members of NCIP voting to, it's an opportunity. I get it. And yes, the governance of policy we have affords the mayor to do that, get that. You can make arguments about, well, mayor did it too, but so now it's, it's this mayor's opportunity. Each circumstances are different. But when you look at the loss of experience for Altamasa, Casano, Oakdole, Fish Flats, the alternate, it at least is still allowed to remain. But the removal of Dwayne Peterson and, and and Jill, I guess, is the new rep, but Tammy was the alternate and she's not even considered for the current alternate. So, so is that, is that a mistake?
Just clarify that real quick. Cause I, I had that in my notes. I don't know why I overlooked that. Tammy's term wasn't up, so that's why her name is not presented here tonight. She's still an alternate.
Okay.
So just for the record, I know she was.
She doesn't know that.
But I, I'm, I'm communicating that now. She, her, her, she should know, right? Like when I was appointed to the ARC, when you and Clyde appointed me, recommended my appointment to the council for the ARC.
Yeah.
I looked at the paperwork that I received and it told me how long my term was. So Tammy should be able to go back into her, I'm not sure how it's communicated to the members these days, Clementine. If members are emailed their term papers.
Just for a matter of time. That's, that's sidebar. We need to communicate with her because she obviously made that statement tonight. So we need, we need to immediately communicate with her so she's not left in the dark. But I want to continue. The, the overview I have here is it's like, why change so many at the same time? I get that we have alternates. We want to bring them in. We want to have new members. We, we, you go through the process, you find some great people. But it still doesn't sit well with me when somebody doesn't even apply for the position and you start plugging it in at, at your own perspective. And they're not even plugged in as an alternate. They're, they're basically, they jump right into the, to the lead position. And what I'm hearing is from the neighborhood associations and the current NCIP voting members that a variety of these new names haven't even been involved in their associations, haven't attended meetings, haven't participated, never been an alternate, brand new to the process. And to her credit, the caller, Chenere, am I saying it right?
Chenere.
Chenere?
Chenere.
Chenere, Chenere, Chenere called and said, and Chenere said that she was selected as an alternate. So she had alternate time and that was very valuable for her. She said she was lost, confused. She needed time ramp up and, and everybody does when they have a new, a new role. Lord knows when I got elected in 2014, it took time to ramp up. You just don't jump right in and act like you're that experienced tackle and you're game ready. I just think it's too many positions, wholesale changes. I think it's throwing away the spirit of what the unique program is about. We're supposed to be in collaboration. We're supposed to be able to have connections to, to reach out. The phone tree, go visit your neighbors. You're supposed to attend and participate in the meetings. You're, you're, you're protecting the, the rights of your neighborhoods, projects that they've put forward as a voting member. And you become the voice of that neighborhood in representing the programs or the projects that are, are the highest interest of your neighborhood. Well, how do you do that when you haven't even participated in anything? Now they're going to have a years, I suppose, to ramp up, but it's starting cold. They haven't participated before. And I just think it's throwing away too much experience and it's gutting the golden goose of a very unique NCIP. And you've heard the last three meetings, how concerned people are on these radical changes. They don't trust this action tonight because they fear there's wholesale changes at work with the program that affects their neighborhoods. So we either need to take a pause, we need to go back and look at this to balance it where we have more experience. And I am also very concerned that there was an initial. And I am also very concerned that there was an initiative on your part, mayor, to just completely not contact the associations to get their input. And I and I just think that's that's your choice. It's not what I think would have been the best collaborative opportunity because you would have been able to be in a position to hear from them. And yes, they might have advocated, they might have had specific names, but that's part of what we have to do to filter through what's what we're trying to get to. I've been through this process before since being on the council in 2014. We we did do this with a subcommittee of the mayor and I participated with another council member. I think we did 42 interviews. It was a lot of work. We gained a lot of knowledge. There were two of us. We made recommendations to the whole council. We didn't agree on all of them. But I just felt it was more worthy of a process when it was not just a singular person making that position. And one thing that the mayor did to compensate for being the person that made that process and decision is he consulted with the presidents of the associations. He was tied to that. He made a concerted effort to reach out. He would email, he would phone call. He would check with the current voting members. He would check with the members of the association to get a sense of is this person ready? So it's not as if he just made unilateral decisions like it's happening tonight with this recommendation. He actually did the homework and dove into the neighborhood associations, and I think that's the value. And when we do not honor and recognize and spend time listening to the neighborhoods and we make a unilateral decision to pick someone to be the voting member, I think we're losing out on a whole bunch of credibility. And again, I think we need more experienced, balanced, and there's too many new folks being recommended. So I don't agree with the recommendation. But I'm open to figure out how we move forward with a pause and a reflection and a relook at this to not exclude the most experienced members.
Thank you. Dr. Barber.
So I do echo the the thanks to the neighborhood reps, neighborhood presidents, vice presidents, and all the members, actually, because it takes everybody. And so I applaud them as my colleague had already done before. I was actually a part of the same process, not for the NCIP, but we're talking about board. We're talking about boards and commissions, all, not just the NCIP. And they going through basically this same process. So my understanding is this is the same process that was in line two years ago, six years ago. So, you know, I I'm trying to understand why it's such a issue now. You know, what 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 is what is really the issue? If it's an issue now, but it wasn't an issue two years ago or four years ago or six years ago. Uh, I went through the process myself and I wasn't chosen for commissioner boards that I applied for two times. But then when I went back in, I was actually put on one of the boards. But the thing about it is I was also asked, I put in for one board, I was asked if I was interested in the other. So I that happened during, what, three years ago, four years ago? So that does happen because it happened to me. So I want to make sure that we clarify that. Also, I noticed that we're talking about cleaning slate. If I I don't see cleaning slate when we're talking about three of the divergent pieces that, um, of of people, excuse me, people out of 14 NCIP appointments. That doesn't sound like it's cleaning slate. Secondly, um, I feel like if those same people who have served for so long, which I think is great, you know, if you want to still be a part of your community, you can still be a part of your community. To me, I don't have to be a rep to be able to represent my community. I represent my community whether I'm a rep or not. And so that can still happen if you so choose. And so I think that's important. The timing of it, um, I believe it was voted on in 2019. I wasn't even here that you all ended up saying it was four year term. Everybody knew that. This is not a surprise. This is not different. So this should not be anything that somebody's like, oh, my gosh, this is happening and we have to get it. It's not. No, everybody knew this. So if everybody knew this and this wasn't a surprise, then we should be able to move move forward. Also, believe Clementine showed the various ways and avenues that anyone could speak to the mayor about any concerns. And it was several different avenues. It was people who liked email, didn't like email, on social media, did or not on social media, people who could walk up, people who couldn't walk up, people who could make a call, couldn't make a call, whatever it is, people have several different ways to be able to communicate. And so I think that it's been several different avenues and access for everybody for it to be fair. I think we need to make space. It's just like a job. I mean, if you say, well, if people say, well, you know, especially if you just get out of college, they say, well, you need experience. You you got to get experience. Well, how can I get experience if you don't give me a chance to get the experience? Hello. I mean, that happens all the time with our college students, but we have to make way for that. It doesn't mean that we take away the expertise that are in the house. Doesn't mean that we take away the expertise that are in the different positions. Expertise is still there if they so choose. But the expertise is also still there because it's not everybody is wiped out from all the decades and decades that they have given. So that's still there in in the house. And I think it's important that when we talk about the neighborhood, it's all the neighborhood. It's not just certain people that's in the neighborhood, but it's everybody in the neighborhood. So let's give space. We're not excluding everybody. It's the inclusiveness that we're talking about that brings forth, even without drivers, to make the table longer. I heard somebody say it's making the table longer. It's not taking out anybody. It's making the table longer to give that space. So I think that's important. We still have presidents and vice presidents that the NCIP are choosing of their own. So you still have authority in those positions to be able to to do that. So I think that's great. We talk about subject matter expertise. They can still participate. We talked about that. So we don't discount that. So I think it's important to make sure that the the process that we've been talking about tonight, that can be looked at another time because that process has been going on for six years. So that shouldn't be the issue tonight because the issue is actually the people. So as far as I'm concerned, I don't discount these people and say, well, you can't do the job. You can't do the job. You can't do the job. All these names that are on here. No, I want to give you a chance. Open up the space for all the representation of the neighborhood. So I will be supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Barber. Thank you to to all my colleagues for entertaining this. I mean, obviously, at least since I've been on the council, we've never had to engage in this much discussion around recommendations from the mayor. And I completely respect and understand the frustration that has been elicited from folks involved in the neighborhood associations. In fact, this it was a learning experience for me. I didn't know that Clyde engaged with the neighborhood presidents. I, in fact, I probably should have reached out to him to figure out how he engaged in that process. I think my point, though, still stands in regards to creating fairness and equity in in regards to the appointment process. I'm not going to treat any one group special or different, and it has nothing to do with NCIP or the neighborhood associations. I completely respect that process because ever since I've been on the council, the number one, the most important thing to me, other than any of the issues that we focus on, is community engagement. I want us to create create a space where more folks can get engaged and involved in the political process. And a lot of the work that's being done in the neighborhood associations does just that for the city of Monterey. So I thank and appreciate all those that have been engaged and involved in neighborhood associations. And I hope that based off of this conversation, we can create a space of finding out how do we engage more folks? I don't, I I'm not about creating insulated conversations or closing people off. I'm not about that at all. I just want to make sure that we have a fair and equitable process. I I just want to respond to a few things. Councilmember Smith, your your comment in regards to the idea for time for ramp up. When I got onto the ARC, I had to learn a lot. I asked a lot of questions. Any of anybody that served on any of the boards, commissions and committees has to go through that same exact experience. And sometimes I learned this even through my career, just being pushed into this situation, you're going to learn. And I'm sure that Shenary, when she went from an alternate to a rep, it was still a huge ramp up that she had to do because not being in that rep seat and actually sitting in that seat, nothing can replace that experience. And you just alluded to that when coming on to the council. Nothing can beat actually sitting in the seat. And so I I I appreciate that, but to Dr. Barber's point, I'm talking about three seats, three. Although there are other new people appointed, you brought up.
I'm going off of the list.
Oh, good. You brought up Dwayne. Dwayne resigned. And and anybody else that's new that's on there is because somebody resigned. That wasn't because I'm doing replacement. So I just wanted to draw a distinction. I get that there's new, a lot of new things going on and happening, but I just wanted to clarify that point. I'm happy to set up meetings and with the new reps in the neighborhood associations. I think that's a wonderful idea. So I appreciate you bringing that forward, Councilmember Hafa. And and I I hope that the neighborhood the associated neighborhood associations are open and willing to engage in that dialogue so that we can get the new reps and and alternates, if if that's applicable in those situations, to be introduced to the neighborhood and start getting that process of of that ramp up for them. Yes, I saw Dr. Barber's hand first and then we'll go to.
Go ahead, Dr. Barber.
Okay, go ahead. Please go ahead.
Okay. Um, you know, I know there's going to be motion soon and it sounds like it sounds like the the mayor's recommendation is going to have the support. I just want to, I just want to point out that in the NCIP process, there are leaders and there are spokespeople like like Rick Hoyer and Richard Ricello, who is obviously has been involved in this right from the beginning. And yeah, he's the neighborhood president. But I don't see that as puts anybody in conflict. I see that as a heightened, actually, it's a benefit because you know, Richard's rep, he's representing Kona. He's he's talking to his neighbors. He's talking to the members. He's getting input that very organized Casanova Oaknoll with an effective leader who has been involved for years and done well. I just don't see the balance of how you go to a removal of that leader and wholesale change of a new leader and a new alternate. Altamasa, same example, someone who has served so well in a neighborhood, he's not a member of the association. He certainly is a past member and as you heard him say, helped form Old Town. And he was a renter and loves this community just like so many more of the presidents and voting members of NCIP. Their concern is what their neighbors want to do with those projects. And if those projects don't have unanimous support, they don't get voted on. So the person that's representing the NCIP and voting, if they aren't tied to the neighborhood association and they haven't talked to those neighbors as they review those projects and there is not unanimous support for those projects, the project dies. What I don't want to see happen is there is a wholesale change by a whole bunch of people who don't know because they've never even been to their association meetings. They've never attended NCIP night. They're completely walking in from the blind. And I think there's just such a huge amount of people leaving and it's not just three. There are Amy is new, Shelley is new, David is new, Gary is new. And Jill, obviously, as you said, is replacing Dwayne because he's resigned. And then the the alternates. So that's a lot. It is a lot of loss. I think the reason you heard passionate comments and we've seen emails. I've had visitors to my office. I've had texts, emails, phone calls. I hope all you've gotten them as well. It's because the membership in the NCIP is emotional, deep seated by people who love this community and are willing to help the city of Monterey. Many of these people have fought, have been members, chairs, treasurers, put out signs, campaign, measure G, measure Y, measure P, measure S, on and on and on. And it fought that for the city Monterey's benefit to make it a better place. And their performance has been great right up to today. And suddenly they're tapped in the shoulder and told, sit down on the bench, we're putting a rookie in. That's what I can't reconcile in my mind. If if merit, if merit is used anywhere in our system, why are they being penalized? Just to make room for new. There's new, bring in an alternate, introduce them to the association. They have an opportunity. Get involved. Bringing in new with such wholesale changes, to me, slaps in the face of disregarding competency, the involvement. And it's not just the history, but it's the heart and soul of NCIP. And that's why people are speaking the way they're speaking. It's emotional. They care. They're passionate. And they don't want this council with this vote tonight to mess up something that has been fantastic and no other government anywhere has it in their charter. It's because the neighbors want to have a voice and this action tonight means many people, once again, don't trust the city council. And I can't support it. It's about trust and it's about believing the neighborhoods. And I think this is a slap to the neighborhoods.
Real quick, I just want to make one quick comment. Councilmember Smith, I completely respect your perspective and point of view about how you would address it if you were the mayor. I I respect that. I just want to make sure that the folks that are listening in that I'm recommending to replace the the folks that I'm I'm recommending not reappointing. I feel that they're completely competent and will be successful in doing that work. And I just want to make sure that they don't feel in any way less than because of some of the comments that are, I mean, there is an assumption that can be made around what comes next with these folks coming on board.
Well, and I.
And I'll just let me just let me just finish. I I respect the process. I followed the process. My recommendation is what it is. My point is that I I I appreciate hearing your perspective and and how you would handle things differently. Dr. Barber had her hand up, so I'm going to let Dr. Barber go and then we can circle back around.
Uh, well, actually, I was making a motion.
Please.
So I make a motion that we accept the mayor's recommendation.
Second.
Okay. So any other discussion?
Yeah, I just, I do want to address those that are being recommended tonight. Nothing is meant to be disparaging to you with your effort to get involved and your wanting to be a volunteer to help your neighborhood. That's not my comments. They're not directed to you at all. I hope I've been specific enough. I'm glad you're stepping forward and wanting to be involved. I just disagree with the process as I've said. Too many changes too fast. New members are always welcome for any board and commission and to support the recommendations that are outside of the NCIP, but are also involving all of the other boards and commissions that are listed in the staff report. So nothing is meant to be disparaging to any of these members that are new. I'm sure as a new member, they will do their homework. They will talk to a lot of people and they'll get ramped up as fast as they can. Will come out on the other side of this. If they do their work and they volunteer to learn the process, they have their opportunity to also perform like the other ones did. But I'm still sorry to see some of the more experienced ones leave right now.
And you, mayor. Yes. Any other comments, Councilmember Hafa?
Yeah, so, um, as I said, if if after meeting with the neighborhoods and deferring this until August, if this, these were still your recommendations, I would support them then. But I I can't support the motion now. I feel like we heard good feedback about just in terms of completing the work of the current commit committee, why we should delay until August. And I think part of the process, not through the fault of anyone, but it happened that way, is that part of the process, not through the fault of anyone, but it happened that way, is that there wasn't the opportunity for neighborhoods to provide feedback before the recommendations. So what I was thinking was you would meet with them, get their feedback, review your recommendations. Maybe you'd bring the same ones back. Maybe you would make changes. I don't know, but I, I would be, would have been willing to support it then, but I can't support it now.
I got you. Well, I feel like that creates a little bit of an awkward environment and kind of drags out, I think, this political divide that's already been created because let's say we meet with the neighborhood associations. We're in, we're, let's say this is the neighborhood, this is, this is, say, this is the Altamasa Neighborhood Association. And I bring in Amy and they're like, oh, she's wonderful. Okay. And so what? They decide, no, we don't like her. I, I just, what kind of impression are they going to get from one meeting? To really say whether or not this is going to be a good person? And it just kind of creates an awkward environment because now there, there's this whole public thing that we've kind of made up halfway in between. And if we decide not to do it because of some feedback from neighborhood, now we're creating an awkward thing between neighbors in the same neighborhood. But further to my point, I would say I can't imagine that going through that process wouldn't result in the neighborhood associations being like, yeah, well, this is what you presented to us. So I guess, yes, I mean, what other choice do we have? Or they might just say, no, we want to keep the same person that we have there. I mean, but my recommendation would likely be the same. So I'm willing to have that meeting and discussion. But I don't know if that should be necessarily contingent upon their feedback in order to make that decision. So.
I hear you. I just think getting the names Friday didn't really give them enough opportunity to participate.
Nor anybody else. And actually, I've actively advocated with, for us to get the agenda sooner. I've, I've disclosed my conversations with staff. Part of my learning process along the way of being able to post those applications online as soon as they come in. To me, that's for the next process. We're going to implement as we go here. I just think creating some kind of ad hoc thing on the side that nobody else had to go through, only these three people just kind of seems arbitrary. And I, I understand where you're trying to get to, but I also think it creates more problems than helps. I mean, unless the motion maker and the secondary want to maybe incorporate your feedback, I mean, I guess I'm open to the will of the council at this point.
Under discussion, please. Yeah. So I, I think you keep saying three, but I think it's four, four presidents, right?
President?
Boy, not presidents. I mean, representatives or voting, voting reps.
I, I think the the tension in regards to this conversation isn't about folks that have resigned and there was vacancies and then they appointed. I think it's specifically around the folks that were long-term incumbents. And I've selected somebody to replace them.
Well, I got that, but you.
There's only three.
Okay. So if, if it's three, Rick Hoyer did not resign.
Yep.
Richard Richello did not resign.
And Tom Rowley.
And, and Tom Rowley did not resign.
Yep.
Okay. And so and David, David Chalk, is that correct? What happened with Dear Flats? What was the?
They both resigned. The alternate and the rep resigned.
Okay. So you're right, three. I want to, if I can, under the discussion where Alan was going was the public wasn't really aware of this unless you had an interview with the person that was under consideration. So the association wasn't contacted by you because of your choice of the process. You did have an interview on the phone with the NCIP voting members. And then there was a period of wait. And then Friday afternoon. So then as Alan is saying, the mass, large group of people that were here tonight or called in tonight or have been emailing us, found out Friday. So that's not a lot of time for the public to respond to that. And I think that's part of, part of the, the angst is that this is a shock to many people. And I don't think that the process is very comfortable.
And I, I would just clarify one part of your statement, which is the public didn't have an opportunity. I think the concern that I'm hearing from both of you is not the community at large. It's specifically the neighborhoods. But the, the neighborhoods associations didn't have time to.
That's, that's the public. That's what I'm talking about.
They don't represent everybody in the public, though. And that's kind of my point in regards to the process. I wouldn't give exclusive dialogue in consideration of feedback from one group of people. I would want to open it up for everybody in the community to be able to provide that feedback and input, which is why I've moved to recommend to staff to update the process so that we can allow it to be more transparent. I didn't change the process. I'm following the process that we've had all along. The, the difference is, and it, what's clear to me tonight, is that the previous mayor engaged behind closed doors with the neighborhood associations. And I didn't know he did that. I didn't know how he handled that process. But I chose not to, again, not knowing that he did that. Because I would have to open that up for everybody. In my opinion, I would have to open that up for everybody in the community to provide me feedback and input in regards to my recommendations for the boards, commissions and committees.
Well, just, just to be clear, I, I look at the neighborhood members of their association as public. So that's why I say the public. I'm talking about the members of the association have clearly said tonight, this was news to them and they got no opportunity to contribute. The other thing is the former mayor went to the NCIP meetings. He went to the associations. He went to the individual board meetings. So he, he was tied to them. And many members of the council can do the same thing, not just our own, not just our own neighborhood. But we can certainly go to any other association meeting that we choose to. And we're welcome to. I think they would like it. But clearly we've heard from the public where they feel like they were left out. And so I can't support it.
Calling the question, I think it's a good time for us to maybe just go for a vote on this. So the motion is to approve the recommendation from mayor. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes three, two. We're going to go into closed session. There are two items on the closed session. The first is conference at legal counsel, existing litigation. Citul? Citul, what's the name? Sis- Siselle Young versus City, Amy Rodriguez versus City. And the second one is labor negotiations with JEM, MEA, MPA, PLMA, MFFA, MFCOA, MMEA. Anybody in the chamber wish to speak on this item? We have one in the chamber. Anybody else? All right, we're going to check online. I'm going to do a countdown for folks to use the raise hand function to five, four, three, two, one. We have nobody online, so we'll go ahead and go to the one in the chamber. And if everybody can, excuse me, if everybody can keep the conversation down, we're still running the meeting, please go ahead with public comment.
Hi, Eric Palmer, Monterey Vista Association. The state of labor relations as a, in a government organization is a topic that typically goes unnoticed to the public unless a labor unit goes public, like we saw this year. Or maybe the public doesn't understand why it matters to them. But the labor relations should be important to the public because it affects our services, our public safety and finances when there's turnover. A lot of employees here stay in their jobs because of what's called public service motivation. And we get public, we get positive feedback from residents and they show us, they show us value and that's a rewarding part of public work. Public service work. And while we get that gratification from the public, it's very challenging to not feel valued by staff leadership and not feel heard. Organizational behavior is a science and studies show, prove that when employees believe that procedures used to make decisions are fair, they're more likely to accept outcomes when they may not get what they want. I'd say that this organization's not carefully managing employee perceptions of procedural and interactional justice, which is a belief system that management is treating them fairly and with respect and consideration. The organizational climate here is one of distrust. And this does not fall on the council, who I know take great care to acknowledge our frontline workforce. And I know you all personally to be empathetic, empathetic toward labor. I'm not exaggerating that frontline city staff from across every department are fatigued by the yearly antagonistic nature of negotiations from our negotiating team that make this process unproductive, delay agreements and create unnecessary feelings of job insecurity and anxiety. We need to stop the spread of negative emotional contagion. I'm asking for improved accountability to improve labor relations and trust so that future negotiations don't have to be contentious every year. And it hasn't always been that way. And I hear that very often. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we will bring it back to the council. And we'll go ahead and adjourn to closed session.